The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode. Thank you for joining us today. We're excited to hear your thoughts on the upcoming strategic plan. We'll be getting started in about 90 seconds. Thanks for joining us. We'll be getting started in about 30 seconds. 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 We'll be getting started in about 30 seconds.
Welcome. It's 6:50 and welcome to our Strategic Plan Workshop on January 28, 2023. First, I just really want to thank staff that we didn't want to open for folks who say more than everybody. Everybody, so this day live on Chambers video that we have. So this can check sections up there. So I tried to be clear about all of the faults. Please enjoy that up there. And so what really is happening and why? And I got the responses. People just saying thanks again. Thank you to all of you that were involved.
We're ready to begin. This is the councilors. And so we're going to turn this over to our senior favorit, Jan Klaak. Thanks for joining us. We're excited to hear what we're going to present.
Excellent. Thank you. It's great to see you all again. And I had to reflect back of when we completed your strategic plan. You adopted it in April 2022, and here we are. It's already the end of January. So you're a few months into this, and it's good timing to take a step back and say, how are we doing? What do we want to look forward to? So that's what we're going to focus on in the next session this evening. So we really have four objectives to work with and leave them out in separate sections as part of our agenda for tonight. We want to give you an opportunity to evaluate progress to date. So what's your sense of where you've come from the time that you adopted the planning plan? Taking a step back to reflect and then get to give staff rights based on that evaluation and assessment of their, how you're judging and evaluating the progress. So then we're going to look at what we call the high-level strategic direction, which would be a complete review of mission, revision, your guiding principles, and the five strategic priorities that you have that are part of this plan to see if anything has changed in the current environment that would cause you to want to make any adjustments in those high-level instances. So we'll do that. And then probably what we'll spend the bulk of our time is going into each strategic priority and looking at all of the individual objectives that are there as well as the key performance indicators that we spent a lot of time developing last spring and summer to give you a good set of measures that staff could report on progress regularly. So you would know where you are on the different objectives and how they're implementing. And the final piece will be for you all to give staff any additional guidance you would like to give them going forward as we make updates to the plan, any other things you would like them to do regarding communication and progress reporting. So those are kind of the four big chunks that we're going to do this evening. As an update, I wanted to let you know that staff has been working on the questions that you've been asking over the past couple of days. So on the top of your page, you have an updated kind of called Strategic Plan Workshop presentation information. And it includes detailed responses to the questions you asked as well as a couple of areas where staff are recommending some updated key performance indicators. And staff will be prepared to share that with you. So with that, I would just entertain any questions, any reflection before we actually get going on the agenda items?
I would add to that attachment. They're in the order of questions or findings, but in order of where they best align with the strategic priorities or objectives, focus of difference, so where they might be.
I think that's helpful because we'll be going through each strategic priority in order. So you can find the answers to your questions in the order of the strategic priorities that we need to look at as we're going through this session. Okay? So let's start with councilors sharing their thoughts on implementation. If you were going to step back and reflect on what you know about the progress so far, and you could sort of, from a higher summary level, not, you know, a detailed level, but higher summary level, evaluate and assess where you think you are in the planning implementation, what you perceive as going well or has gone well so far. And then we can get into maybe discussing any changes that you would like in terms of implementation and reporting process going forward. So what's your assessment progress so to date?
I'd say the high-level strategy level, many things that I would like to see, so my comments are mainly for what's not, you know, in positivity is impacting. I think we still have a housing crisis and much on. It is rising, part of that, yeah. So public safety concerns are pretty significant. And I would love to see a lot more on that. The actual plan we have here, I think it's been fine. As I progress even to the name, it's on the road, it's not fast, it's not speed. And that that improvements, staff is only going to drive the water. Now so that we want to, how much on traffic, I think speeding is a problem still is. It seems, so I'm not sure what's going on down there. So I can't, that should be included in this plan somewhere. Safety is a concern and it's getting worse. Yeah, but overall, I'd say we're doing fine with the plan, but the plan is missing stuff.
I'm very happy with the plan that we created because we've been very intentional in, you know, we have our strategic priorities. There's some tweaking that needs to go on. Still, like, you know, post-pandemic hiring, great resignation, call around runoff of law enforcement in particular. But, you know, I see, I see great things as far as quality of life and people are too, we're enhancing our parks and recreations. 52 days, I'm worrying about my, yeah, 56 minutes, yes, to really update what we're doing. Your parts, and then, you know, working on the safety part and seeing to address that and some issues. But I think overall, and I hope from staff's perspective, it's that generally down the focus gives us, gives us greater results. And there's, there's one-offs that come on, on everything, things come like that. It doesn't have to be, yeah. There's enough there. Sit down and present. I'm happy with the frame. Answered? No? Sorry.
I think we made some progress on, you know, on some things in strategic plan. The ones that, yeah, I do agree with Ovi. I think that there's more of maybe some different types of measures you may want to look at with respect to traffic and safety within the city. So, you know, when I think about, and maybe this is not the correct time. So I, I, so with respect to traffic safety, I think that's an issue where I think we talked about it later. I talked about some, having our focus on some of the, the measures could be improved as well, you know, the community impact alone that we have in our communication plan. I definitely still think we should be tackling housing in a broader sense than we, you know, right now. We're certainly having to focus on preservation. But I think that we also need to be looking at housing when we talk about our proactive public safety. You know, part of that is about making state housing. And yes, we have a rental program, but we also have certain issues with corporate ownership of family housing and especially even to the floor unit projects and buildings that people do not have the rental protections really within Colorado. So I don't know, you know, I'd like to have a little more study on that. That's something that the city does or the state might be able to tackle for rental protections as we have heard from community members. We have to come back to public car. That's another concerning issue that they're dealing with with landlords and that. So there's that piece of public safety that we do sort of mention in here, but not necessarily possible. But like, the other, I would say with respect to our overall organization, I still would like better readouts of how are we doing with diversity, equity, inclusion, age, tolerance. We get the reports on who are we hiring, how many people are we hiring, some management, how are we doing as an organization, are we fostering development growth outside of just the typical white male oriented infrastructure that often with the governments and money bar industry of all. So I'd love to be able to see how we're doing and keep there on some good progress points to point out. Like, you don't have measures, you can't, you have to keep that. Another thing. Two other things. The cultural affairs come to mind. So I'd still like to see more effort go towards that. I know there's, you know, trying to figure out what we can, what we, what we can afford as a, as an organization, but also can we do more to foster the arts in the city? And so that's one piece where I feel like we can do more, you know. Finally, infrastructure, it's certainly made progress, but it still personally need a better understanding of how the progress we've made to this point, what it's been for 10 years. And beyond that. It's just a. That's your spin?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Oh, no, it just came out of my tongue. Sorry. I think for our plan, I feel like we set a budget, we set a plan, and what I've seen so far, we're executing from what I can hear from our community and see with our staff and what our staff reports indicates. I think, Michelle, the one thing that I, the only thing that I would like to see really for a counselor overview perspective is kind of a bridge version, right? So that I, because I can't do this in the community and say, whoa, looks like we're all. I would like to have a strategic priority where 50% complete and we have it's all 2025. It, so that from a high level, I think they will be on track to be able to, to be able to, for the past two years, wherever it was. Just in a bridged version, so that it's, I use this, I carry this all the time. Because one user for me to be able to reiterate to community members or organizations or businesses to say, here's our, and then here are the priorities that we set. Now if they say, okay, so where are we at with quality of life? I mean, I, I'm not, because I can, I mean, if they really want to do that, I would put it to, to manage your practice. I would just like a feature that is a little bit more, you know.
Major talking points of the major progress areas so that you can talk from it.
Yep. It doesn't have to be complicated or, I mean, just call it to the people at points. Here we are. Here's where we're going and we'll accomplish it. But I, I think that what we have in here is good. There's a lot of good substance in here. It's a lot more that we're going to be accomplishing here in the next year, year and a half. But I can really think that staff has done a good job at pivoting and listening to council on unmeaningly training, even if it's not in here. And that's what I think is the top priority. It's, you know, if you didn't accomplish or we didn't foresee what needed to be specifically in the plan. And that's where I think the community has allowed us to work with staff to pivot and. So I, I think we're on a good path and I'm sure hopefully for tonight, there may be some issues that we could work together on. But so far, so we hope well.
When I started reviewing this, I went back and looked at the hopes I had sent to council back in November 21. And I'm still disappointed with this strategic plan because I think it's more of a guide for the city staff than is statement of what the council does. Okay, I like the, I like the mission statement and the vision statement. But as I've expressed before, specifically thrift. I don't see any need to put that in there because that's certainly not what we've done. It's certainly not been, I mean, a priority of ours. So if they do anything, I just take that out. They don't think this is to mislead. And the rest goes into details and I would like to focus more on how this council works with council and all these details.
Going past hazards, challenges and opportunities. I would say that as far as like, just to speak to the thrift part, I see that it's how we do it. Whether it's us or whether it's staff, and I think that's really important to have those properties. Same with the approach that was put down by Jody and is now being carried out as far as how we go after the DEI. It's about how you do business and that should be across the board, whether it's in this council room, whether it's the staff doing their job or boards and commission. So I, I have to say that I like commissioning and I think thrift should stay in there. I will say a couple of things as far as like this plan. I'm pretty happy. I think there are those little massages. I would have agreed with Councilor Zadi that I'm still, as I asked in this. I think we asked that after this plan was done. But we did ask as a council for some ways for us to combat speeding out of that. It sounds like the state is going to do some stuff, but I still am interested in how we as a city get to the place where people don't uncover and speed through our city. You don't, you know, realize they're doing crime in the city unless it's something that you're going to get accountable for. So I think that there's some room in there to have some actual measurable things around particular criminal activity. And I think that specific ask was to work with the PD and the courts to find what areas were actually problems so that we're not driving that, that it's actually a problem that we're seeking. I mean, if the police came back and said, hey, we don't feel that that's necessary, I certainly would be open to hearing that. But I would like to have that conversation because that's something that's been hidden out there for some time. And I wanted to at least address the housing thing just because it came up. If, if we were to want to look at something like that, what I would. that, what I would ask for, because I know that there were even articles about where we needed as a city and came to apartments specifically. Um, I, I have the feeling that, you know, that our stock is probably hurting more in that middle when we're occupied. So I'd be curious to actually get a report how, how we think we're doing. And I don't seem to recall, maybe something coming in the future, but, you know, they did the, the formal housing study some years ago. I think that was even probably before I was on, we referred back to that as a city multiple times. Um, so I'd like to know what, what impact did that, all those apartments actually make when it comes to housing stock? Um, where are people who come into the city? Um, what are they not being able to find? Because I mean, I even think of some of the city department heads that had moved back to Colorado or in Colorado for the first time, uh, they're finding apartments in the city. So is it a particular kind of apartment that we're missing? Is it a particular kind of housing that we're missing? Uh, I'd like more detail around that if we're going to look at that as a council, but I'm open to that conversation at some point. Um, I don't, I don't know enough to say that it would be something that I'm wanting here, but I certainly am open to looking at that. Um, but as far as what, what's been laid out and amount of progress that the staff has made, I'd say it's pretty impressive. There's been a lot of changes. One of the things we set out as a council this year was, uh, or last year was hiring a new city manager. We did that. We said, I was looking and seeing what the target was to have a review for September, it's December, you know, by the time you have it on our calendar and everything, I think you're pretty on target with that. So, um, we're never all going to get what we want with something like this, but I have to say that we're proud of the work that, that we've done as a council and staff has done.
For me, because for most of the time of that, I was helping the, um, personally, the people who were, um, planning the agendas. So, um, you know, heard, saw how the different pieces get put on and, and thought processes. I think, I love this just because it's bold. You can see that. You can see sort of our volumes and whatnot. And some of these spaces you talk about as strategic for, for years or five years, um, some of them are going to be done and then they, some of them take two years, some of them take the full five years. So it, it is ever changing, moving, and that's the reason we do this every year. And, uh, so I appreciate the colors and the boldness because it was easy to just see where we're at. And we have the colors that are going, I don't know why this didn't happen. Um, we can, we don't, um, say what, um, sense, because sometimes you have to get some of these things before we, we can get some other things. Each thing does not necessarily stand alone. We, we have all of that mentioned together. So for me, that helps because we don't do the great thing. Instead of priorities, we set this in motion and it's people that we get sent to us and maybe their yard of pieces, uh, if we're asking something possible, um, say it in, but, uh, so I think we've done well, uh, for, uh, I focus more on how council works together as a council. I, I think this was a fine example of how we went through a whole long day with you and we did different groups, we had our conversations, we were in different, um, scenarios. Um, this was all seven voices in you and we knew who's our voice, what we were trying to portray. That's on me or whoever that's building. They got that. And in the end, we have to have, or people at least, that will do something for us. That is just how we work. You folks can't do what each one of us individually wants to do or we had to do. So, um, so from, from where we were a year ago and where Jody brought us to we got the city manager here and we've all done a great job. Of course, there's always room to tweak things and that's what we're doing.
I think that's a, a wrap up and a reflection of what all of you shared. Um, I'm going back to the plan development retreat that we had in last, over that time period. And it, um, there were several areas where we had strong consensus, where all the council members were supporting, um, something. And you had some areas where you did have to take a vote, where we couldn't get consensus, but you used your, you know, process of majority to identify those things. And so I think the power of that is that the plan does reflect some consensus points of view. And then it also reflects some majority points of view. And then there's some areas that there wasn't total support or agreement on that can always be looked at again, um, and, and re-discussed. So, um, I think it, it's, it is representative of the group and several of you have already, um, focused in on some areas that you'd like to have some more discussion. So we're going to use this work session to do that. All right. Um, are you ready to move to the next item? Any, any more comment on that opening piece from anybody? Kind of reflect on what any of your fellow, uh, counselors had to say? All right. Let's move on to the, um, review of the city's, uh, strategic direction. So Cody has put up on the screen, um, the high level, the, the first three high level pieces, which are the mission statement, the vision statement, and the guiding principles. So if you recall, um, we spent very significant time.
Every word means something.
Every word means something. And we, we did spend a lot of time talking about what those words mean. And that was not a simple exercise and you all really bow up your sleeves and took that very seriously. Um, so those, those guiding principles were, are the product of you all wanting them to say something very specific. Um, same thing with the vision statement, same thing with the mission. So I'm not saying that, I'm not emphasizing that because you can't look at them and say, oh, yeah, I need to tweak this, but let's look at it through that lens of the time that you spent, just a few months, look at it months ago, really, really trying to nail those down. And then I would say the same thing, we'll see this on the next page with the five strategic priorities that you identified, um, that those be also included in what we're calling high level strategic direction. So, so let's start with the mission statement and I'll just refresh your memories of what a mission statement is. It's a statement of your purpose. Why does Westminster as a city government insist? And so your current mission statement says, uh, Westminster's purpose is to provide core services and foster economic resilience to give our community the opportunity to fly. The, I think I, I remember that in an earlier iteration of that, we tried to list out the core services and then we decided that's a lot of words to put in a mission statement. So we just said, nope, we're going to go with core services. We had a discussion about what that meant and we decided to leave the detail out of the mission statement. So that's kind of what this reflects. What are your thoughts? Are you still happy with this statement? Do you see any revisions that are needed?
Happy.
Happy. Okay. Anybody not good?
I think it's a good state, but as I reflect upon it, so how have we done that? How have we fostered economic resilience? Someone give me an answer or not an answer, an example? I have a couple.
Go ahead and share.
Of the foster farms, a very good thing that enabled a business to move into the community with some stuff. I think the entertainment zones, the two entertainment zones, I think those were things. I was wondering if anyone else has them.
So the two priority areas that can kind of be encompassed in economic resilience would be the priority one, which is preparedness and resilience, and also priority five, which is robust infrastructure. You know, to have, um, resilience, you've got to have good infrastructure. So the kinds of things you'd be looking at would be included in those two priorities in terms of examples, the ways which, um, you're addressing, um, that particular item of your mission statement. I, I would just, I would say, you know, Mark and staff, do you have examples you'd like to share that, that you, based on your progress reporting, would demonstrate some of that, um, economic resilience that's in the mission statement?
A couple of things, uh, come to mind. Thank you, Conservator, for a, a lot of focus this year and, uh, increasing on small business support, uh, targeted industries. Uh, you saw, uh, we received an EPA grant straight into our, uh, larger businesses or, uh, helping them be more resilient by providing, uh, funds through federal funds to upgrade their energy systems, save money. That's all part of that, uh, economic resilience, um, equation. So a lot of work is getting that, it's in the same pipe. Michelle said on infrastructure, um, city council, uh, converging, uh, on a, on a decision for water treatment facility, which is one of our, our backbone pieces of infrastructure. Um, in the past year, uh, the city council, uh, increased funding for streets maintenance, which is also a big part of economic resilience. We heard that, uh, here, last year and a half. Those are just examples off the top of my head, but we have a, a very strong commitment, uh, to these, these priorities, staff team, and it counsels decisions last year.
I would share, I know Obie's gone, um, I'm connected to, and I'm gone with economic development, just even doing the door to door, just show up and they tell their story and tell all the grants they're available. Um, obviously we can help them. Are they on, um, their email list? All of those things, each one, we learn so much from, and I certainly enjoyed those, but they take the time to do that. And I believe that helps retention. I believe that it helps inform and help people know what we do have to offer as the different things change. And I call that resiliency and, and fostering the economics of this city. Because if they don't know options that they have that we can help them, then they just sit there by themselves and sort of flounder. And these folks have the cards there, they invited the call there, but, um, I know they follow up with all of those. And, uh, to me, that's a little German, maybe that nobody was.
So I would agree with Councilor Baker in there. It's a good statement, but there are many ways that we're not getting it and there are many ways that we are. Uh, the mayor's coming, there's a ton of, uh, Peter provided small businesses, like she mentioned. The problem there is communication in the city. I think we need to reimagine how we engage businesses and residents, you know, and, and not over time, but need to continue to contact because we have reasons for people don't know about. And it shouldn't take us doing a doorknob on a Saturday or a big day to inform them on something. They should, there needs to be a way of more active, uh, awareness building of what we actually have. But then on the other hand, the folks who do well in the city are doing well. But there are folks who are not doing well in the city that are not, that don't have that, that competition. There are many folks, probably hundreds of people, falling closer to the poverty line, getting, becoming homeless. And there are various things that we could do to kind of slow that, to cut that off, to change that path for them. But there are thousands of people in there that are struggling. So I think we have to give ones what is in poverty today. It's because there are many thousands more are close to that. So, so I think it, it is a fellow two cities where there is a whole half of the city that is not doing well, I think. Um, so from economic resilience standpoint, we're not getting the heart there. Uh, but from the other hand, the city, I think we're doing well and we do have a lot of grants coming in and just need to keep that.
Any other perspectives or thoughts that people want to share on the mission statement? Also, we'll note that you might want to look at possible new objectives or measures, um, when we get to that, the discussion of that strategic priority. All right. Let's take a look at the vision statement. Westminster is a city of beautiful, safe, well-maintained neighborhoods and destinations with a vibrant diverse economy, rich and resilient environment, and a strong sense of meaning that belongs. Thoughts about your vision statement? Again, really wrestled with that one, trying to get it down to a spare number of words, but that's still conveying an ideal future for Westminster. And so remember your vision statement is where you're going. It's your North Star. Uh, it, you will not have arrived there yet. It's always aspirational, uh, but it should also be achievable. Um, and I think there are a number of the KPIs that we point to, the ways in which you're making progress towards the vision statement. And your strategic priorities are, will definitely selected as focus areas to help you make progress towards that vision statement. So when we get to looking at the five strategic priorities and do we need any adjustment there, we want to reflect back to the vision statement and say, yep, these are the right focus areas that will allow us to do well in that direction. Any thoughts? Yes?
You took the words out of my mouth. This is aspirational because I look at this and see if, if all of this was fulfilled, um, it would be that shining beacon on the, but, uh, you know, we, we are, we are working, um, and we have to keep in mind that, that safety is critical. The president's focused that every change here. And that we need to work towards that, uh, building back the extra money that we put in the streets budget. So that's the other part of that is that, can we say today we're here? No. And this, this could be, this could be forever. It's, it could be aspirational. And, and that's why I like this. It gives something in all parts of our city and addresses community in more. President's good, want to be part of something. And we're working towards that in many ways. But, um, if you're a whole safely, well maintained, uh, codes, we've talked about our budget for COVID, talked about, we've done COVID updates and we continue to do that. And we work to continue to hire police officers and, and put in place a way that they can do what they do and, and port writing and all the, uh, some, so, so. Yep. So I like it from an aspirational standpoint.
Yeah. And this is why we do this cycle every year because you can tweak those objectives then. You complete some things that move you closer to that aspirational vision and then you select some new objectives to focus on and, and possibly new things to fund in your next budget cycle or your two budget cycles to move, to move even better again towards that ideal future. Other thoughts? Yes. That's your favor.
Yeah. I'd like the, the little, uh, I'd like to give more emphasis and focus on the beautiful part. Okay. I think sometimes we've forgotten it. And I think the way we get more to beauty is enable 118,000 people who live here to really, uh, so I can empower them with tools to make that happen. Because even though beauty is really hard to define, it's really powerful. I mean, when, when really people see beauty, we also see safety. Think we forget that. I think when, when our neighborhoods struggle to maintain the look that they wish, that hurts the beauty of the entire city. And sometimes we have competing forces that are to go against each other, and yet we don't acknowledge the conflict that's there. And, uh, sometimes you can't compromise. You've got to go one way or the other. There is no compromise because it just can't happen. So I'd like to see more, I'd like to see everyone in the city think about how do we make the city a better looking city? Mayor's brought up at least dozen times that I can remember, a really graffiti in fact, the beauty of the city. Because it does.
I worded every time I said, you're sick of me.
But it's important. But also so does trash. So does abandoned cars. So do, so do lots of things that, uh, we need to find a way to enable our residents. Cause even, well, the mayor had a wonderful idea when she. Because even, well, the mayor had a wonderful idea when she wanted a posse, deputies, or whatever he wanted. Just to report it and maybe perhaps act immediately and do something. You wanted to arm them with cans of gray spray paint, right?
We got a community that started then before, and they, within 24 hours, they had no baby because they were constantly cleaning it up and that, they just moved somewhere else until the next neighbor took over. So neighborhoods can do it, it's just.
We got to empower them, and we have to know, and we have to let them know that it is not. So I'd like to see more emphasis on that, not that I know how to put it in the vision statements. I think the vision statement is wrong.
All right, so we move to the guiding principles. So to remind you of what these are, these are the precepts that you're asking the city to live by and to demonstrate to the people of the community. It's also a lens through which you make decisions. So I'll just use Councillor Baker's example that Mayor Portem Demat commented on, which is thrift is one of your guiding principles. And, and the guiding principles, as correctly stated, are the how. This is the how we go about conducting our business, how we go about making decisions about what goes in our strategic plan, how the public should be able to expect, to see the city deliver services, right? So this is the list that you came up with again, a lot of attention, the intent? Yes. I'm sorry. That's an audio difficulties. We're going to take five minutes, we're going to break now and restart this conversation. The guiding principles, yes. Absolutely. No, no, it's totally fine. Let's get it fixed.
I interpret 80, 85% accurate.
That's not the best example. Yep. Okay. It does make sense. Yep, a KPI to. Some of them got as far as. Yeah, and I, you know, given the, the far, I was thinking, that's one of the.
I did, I just texted my husband.
You don't get a bench warrant, do you?
It's on. What?
They get a bench warrant. He's Seattle economically.
That's true.
You know, my, I just, it was just a grab bag of work for that.
All right, this is my headache talking. I don't know, what am I looking up?
On resilience, sustainability side, all business support and all the people between grants.
Yes, he wanted it or he got.
Record number of solar permits in the city. Record number of solar permits. Seventeen positions.
I mentioned, I should have mentioned police support and.
I've been able to just like slowly roll in and.
Okay, everybody? Not yet. We're checking your.
Oh, okay, I have to know your turn now, turn the number two. Well, members of.
You have to show up the next day.
Doing your civic service.
Okay, but you just start, yeah, you, you start with what the guiding principles are. So the community, I'll reset the stage. So the next thing we're going to review are the guiding principles. And the guiding principles are the precepts by which you're going to carry out. Mayor Portem Demat referred to the how when we were talking about Councillor Baker's specific example of thrift, which is in your guiding principles. These are the lenses that you would look through to make your decisions, the lenses you would look through to decide what goes in your strategic plan, the lenses you would look through in terms of guiding staff and asking, this is, this is, this is what the commune can respect, expect in the way of service and how service will be delivered. So that's what your guiding principles are. You put, again, a lot of specific words that had a specific meaning to you. So let's, let's go through and review these, get some thoughts, comments, if, if needed, on, on any adjustments that are needed. So there are six of them, and I'll just read them out, and we'll just take them by one. Collaboration and partnership enhances and sustain our relationships with neighboring governments and community-based partners, leveraging our collective resources for maximum impact and benefit to Westminster. Any thoughts or reflections on that first guiding principle?
Working with every mayor in the metro area and two side transportation groups and another group, or two groups in each county. I understand the partnerships that, at all levels that we have, and they're critical to getting.
Yes, Councillor Baker.
Yeah, I think are basically okay, I mean, the fire department, really mutual aid compact is working now, and it's an example of this working properly.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Let's go to the second one. Stewardship and thrift, responsibly manage all of the resources entrusted to our care to meet the needs of today without sacrificing the ability to meet the needs of the future. And I think that statement definitely reflects the intention of the stewardship over the long term. And then the guiding principle of thrift in terms of how you're going to go about doing work of the city through that lens of thrift. Comments or thoughts on this one? Yes, Mayor Portem?
So this same theme is going to go a couple down when we hit the diversity, equity, and inclusion. I just think it's a good point to bring up what I've been asking the council about as far as our environmental advisory board and our inclusivity board and doing something to incorporate them in the strategic planning process so that we are bringing on some goals for them throughout the year. Because the way it works now is they work on things that are in those areas, and then they try to bring them back and see if council would like them to move on it. And it seems like there's a lot of room for them to work on things for a good amount of time that maybe might come back and then get shot down. And so if, you know, they're, in the example of stewardship and thrift, you know, they're being tasked to come up with ways for us to be good stewards of the environment in the city. And so if we could work with those groups in order to bolster and have them kind of be part of strategic planning, I think it makes a lot of sense, and it seems like a good opportunity to show why I think that that makes sense.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on this one?
I've shared with council what Mayor Portem's talking about. Councils get through this process and then immediately meet with all boards and commissions and say, in your next meeting, get two to three goals for this coming year. Here's the plan. You look at it, see where you fit in, what goals you want to go after, and then report back to us. And then six months, report back, and at the end of the year. So I've watched boards and commissions come and go. Sometimes there's just not a need for that certain area anymore. And if we needed anything, it'd be better as a task force that has a time limit and whatnot. So it would probably give them some better feeling of need and a goal if they have their goals and they know what they're looking for instead of spinning at meetings trying to make it up.
The comment that both of you are making is that this, it is a best practice to have your boards and commissions and their work be aligned with your citywide strategic plans. So that would definitely be an improvement that you could make to make sure that alignment is in place and is happening, so they have direction. Counselor, Councillor Nirmala, and then we'll go to Mayor Portem.
I was just going to say, I like the idea of having the boards come in and report back on what progress they've made on the goals that they set out at the beginning of the year. I think they typically do that, right? So I think it'd be a good, more rigorous structure and, yeah, give them more purpose. Having been on one of them, it felt like, kind of, yeah, meandered, sauntered towards some thoughts and goals, but.
I've had somebody, a couple of people that have been on different boards, and they just resigned because they just, their time could be better spent because they weren't doing anything. We're just spinning roses. It's not, it wasn't nice to see the people, but they said, that isn't where my time was spent.
And I know that you're making a difference and that there's focus. Mayor Portem?
Another part of that, because I agree, they need to, no matter which one they're on, and obviously the different boards, you know, some of them are quasi judicial, they have, you know, some of that's governed by the state even, with like special permits and licensing. But understanding or having them understand, you know, our mission, vision, and kind of what's the strategic plan, why we go through it, and how their board fits into, to the overall goal, I think would be valuable to them so they understand, you know, how important the work they do is. Because sometimes, like, say for the personnel board, for example, is one that rarely ever meets, but it's important for them to understand in the realm of that task, why it's important, and so that they understand there's still value in it, even if they only meet twice a year. So I think that, that whole exercise in showing them a strategic plan, how it works, why it's important would be, would be valuable. It's a lot of, you know, a lot of people don't ever go through that process of being, doing a strategic plan or understanding outfits together, so.
They can be so much more intentional about what they're doing and what they're focusing on if they know and they have that clear understanding of what's in your strategic plan and frankly, what your expectations are as a city council for how this, where the city is moving and, and what the city is going to be prioritizing. Excellent. Okay, next one, transparency and accountability. Engage in two-way dialogue with the people of Westminster. Clearly communicate our intentions and decisions and take responsibility for all that we do, thereby earning the trust and confidence of the community. Any thoughts there, reflections?
Can we just go back to the thrift one?
Yeah, sure.
You to speak up.
Did we miss someone?
No, I was just, since he brought up thrift to begin with, I just wanted to make sure he didn't have it.
Oh, yes, Councillor Baker.
Oh, I don't think we've done thrift. And I have shared with my colleagues why I think that, you know. I think we have too many people working in the city and compared to our sister cities. That's, except for Boulder, that's, we don't need that many. I think compared to ourselves, we don't need that many. I think the growth in our, growth in our budgets and what we spend, I don't think we've done anything intentional there to turn that around. It's just been an ongoing thing, and that's my opinion. It's not the majority. That's why I said just take out thrift.
So I, I'd just like to ask Mark if he would have some thoughts about how to potentially look at efficiency in the city and how to look at folding this guiding principle into the budget development process as, as a lens through which you would look through. Mark, any thoughts you would like to share on that?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Michelle.
Yep.
So for the council, you know, when, not to get into the discussion during the executive session, but when we talked about my goals for the year, one of the things that the council talked about was his, you know, taking a good, hard. you know, taking a good, hard look at the city structure, the organization. And, you know, and I think that's certainly something that we can do. But I would offer that I think we need to really take a good, hard look at, you know, what's that baseline evaluation of how do we relate to our sister cities? And where we compare apples to apples, what we're staffed at versus the services that we're providing. Case in point, I'm just still trying to discover all this stuff, but our, our sister city here to the south, Arvada, doesn't have a fire department. I think they don't have parks and recreation. Is that correct?
You have no rec.
Special district, libraries, do they have libraries? No. And so, you know, when you take, when you look at how the city of Westminster per capita, how we're staffed per capita versus Arvada, those numbers aren't going to measure up because they're a very different municipal organization than Westminster. And so I actually worked on this yesterday. So I brought it down here in case this topic came up. But what I was looking at for a smart goal, but a goal for me to work on, but I think it's step one in this conversation of thrift. And that is, we have to conduct a comparative analysis. So specific, perform a comparative analysis between city of Westminster and peer cities to understand the demands for service and the workforce, workforce provisions for that service, right? Because, you know, if, if they have fire and we're doing a per capita, you know, evaluation, correction, if they don't have fire, we do have fire. Our numbers aren't going to make any sense because we're comparing apples and oranges. We're not comparing apples to apples. Measurable comparison will be possible, but services must be measured equitably. That's the apples to apples. Benchmarks could include tax rates, you know, how do we generate our revenues? Staffing levels, the services that we provide, general and administrative costs as a percentage of overall expenditures, per capita comparisons. We could compare things like entry-level firefighter pay versus entry-level police officer pay comparatively. We could look at demand indicators such as calls for service, acres of parks, miles for trails, lane miles, so on. Is it achievable? Yes, we would obviously have to have the cooperation of our peer cities. Is it relevant? And I, I think this is the key point, is that understanding where the city of Westminster stands with service delivery and assigned workforce is the necessary first step in evaluating possible workforce deficiencies and/or reductions, which I think we're, we're encapsulating under the phrase thrift in this conversation. Time-bound, certainly by the end of the rating period, which should be the end of October. So I think that I, I get the conversation about thrift, I really do. But when I look at the city of Westminster and I look at what the city does for the community, we provide an extremely high level of service, extremely high level of service. And it takes people to provide an extremely high level of service. So you're going to have to have people to provide that high level of service. The question is really going to, can we do that more efficiently and be more thrifty? Absolutely, and that's what this team would help me figure out. But I think that the baseline, the, the way you got to start that process is, yeah, I got to look at what do we provide and how are we staffed to provide that? And then compare that equally to our peer cities. How do they provide that based upon their staffing levels? And I don't think we have that information because I think we don't necessarily have an appreciation for what we provide versus what our peers.
Counselor Baker.
But also within that discussion is, are those a service we want to provide?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I would absolutely agree, and I think there are things, you know, that, you know, we may do that, we may scratch our heads and go, you know, is this really what, where we want to put our money? Or do we want to apply our money to other areas, or do we want to save that? And those are all certainly viable options. And I, I certainly get the thrift and, and, you know, comparatively, my former community to today, where I'm at now, you know, what the city of Westminster is able to provide this community, from my perspective, is awesome. It's outstanding. Now, is it the right thing for the community? Well, that's really for you all to decide with the community providing feedback. But I think that it's a high level of service, we're obviously staffed to provide that high level of service. Is it the right mix of services? I think that is open for discussion and debate. And I think the first step we got to do is, is we got to figure out, you know, what, how do we compare so that we don't say things like, you know, well, you know, per capita staffing with Arvada, you know, we're way high. Because, yeah, we are, but they're missing four of our, you know, major departments. So you just got to make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
Mayor Portem.
So kind of back to my point that I made earlier about it's how we do things. I'll give some real-world examples from jobs I've had. So typically, I'm budget-bound, and if I want to do something that saves a new service to the customers, I give service in the IT world. Oftentimes, the businesses I've been at, I went back and said, where's their money that we can squeeze that out of somewhere else by doing something a different way? You know, and typically, that's how I've been able to get budget for things like, say, mid-year. We, as an organization, I have seen times in my, my time on council where the city has done just that. An example I can think of is that the rec center, when they realized there was a certain component with the windows that they no longer made, but they bought a 3D printer and were able to not only continue to service those windows, I think it was, those seals or something, to save a fair amount of money compared to what they were doing prior. So when I think of that, I think those are the kind of opportunities I want to make sure that the city's looking at. You know, I've seen places where we've done that well. I've seen places where we've had to push, and the water plant is one where I'm really pleased with where we're at. But it took a lot of pushing in order to get there. But that's, you know, the same kind of thing. You went and saved, you know, a hundred million dollars, potentially upwards of on, on something that we had to do. So I think it's more along the lines of what we just heard, is that, that as an organization, as Mark gets settled in, he's able to work with his team and, and make sure that that's just something that we always are taking that second look, saying, is this a thing? And kind of more directly, Counselor Baker, to this point you've brought up, I don't have a problem with making cuts if they make sense, but I, for once, will never sign off on arbitrary, just let's cut. I, I want to know why and how, and then if we save money, where is that money going to go to? Because we usually have a list of things that if we have all the money in the world that we would do year to year, that capital improvements or whatever else, get pushed off to the next year. So, you know, if there are those savings that we're also being smart with, you know, where are we pushing, pushing them to?
It sounds like Mark, as the city manager, wants to do and have a goal as part of his plan to, to do some analysis that would start to more sharply focus this lens of thrift. So I think what I would pose to the council is, is there any desire to remove thrift from the, the guiding principle? It sounds like Mark is suggesting, let's keep it there, and let's do some analysis and then have more discussion about it. So do you, would you like to leave the guiding principle as it is for now? Do I see heads nodding? Counselor Baker?
This is a larger discussion, and it's one that we haven't had. And that's really a shortcoming on our part. Okay? But now is not the time.
I think we've.
Bring something else.
Well, I think we've initiated something related to this guiding principle that has led so more to come from Mark on that one. So I think we're leaving that guiding principle as it is, so can we move to transparency and accountability now? Any thoughts on that one? Yes?
I think we've made great improvement here.
On this one?
Yes, on this one. We actually decided how, what our minimum reliable water supply is. And this is something that I had asked in the past and got a separate answer from city staff. Instead of saying 2,000, 23,400 acre-feet of water is a minimal water supply, they sent me a list of, we have so many shares in this company, and so many shares in this company, and so many shares in this company. And that was in 2018. And what we've done now is transparent and understandable and reliable, and a great improvement.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor Portem.
I just think, in my mind, the opportunity with any of this stuff, and kind of this is back to a point that Counselor Emmons made about this being easy to read specifically for the public. When you look at things complex like water supply and stuff, an easy way for it to be reported out in what the holding staff kind of count to, like, so if it's acre-feet of water that a new development is going to take X amount, and it's something easy that people could look at that we're measuring against, if it's something we're going to hold ourselves or staff or expect the public to hold us accountable on. So just a, a good, easy way for us to figure out where those opportunities are so that we can port them out.
Right.
As an organization.
Yes, and Counselor Emmons's recommendation on creating a one-pager, very brief, would get at more of that transparency issue, making this plan more available and accessible to the community. Counselor Seymour.
I think last year we made a, a big jump, started doing our town halls and our community engagement. And we just had that conversation about where we're going this next year and how we can do even better than that, too. I think our community engagement, the follow-up on those people that come to speak at city council meetings, and then the post-follow-up that goes out to everyone, all the staff, has been important, too, so that we can understand how that engagement is going. You know, here again, we can always do better. We talked about how we can improve in our, our community engagement, you know, how we can update our email list and, and reach out and gather those things. So I think that's, the process is moving forward.
Appreciate the examples that you're giving because it really illustrates the ways in which you are using these guiding principles actively. So thank you for taking the time to think of those. Let's go to diversity. Oh, one more.
I want to also just iterate everything that Counselor Seymour said regarding us reaching out and, you know, getting back with people. I think there's still some, and, and the fact that we've done some town halls and have a goal this year to do some more expanded outreach, like, I feel like there's a little more we can be doing, particularly with our non-HOA neighborhoods. And how do we hear from them? How do we have listening sessions, you know, whether it's staff or council? We, there is a lot occurring, a lot of struggle that's occurring in our community and finding ways to just be able to hear from them and hear what the issues are in certain areas that aren't organized as well as night, as an HOA might be. So that's the, when we have that, we have the, I don't know where this is right here, the, uh, you know, we have this goal of reaching out to 25% of Westminster's 160 HOAs and 25% of our informal neighborhood associate. I, I don't even know what that is because if they don't exist, how do you reach out to them? So there, I think that's still just a challenge for us.
Portem.
And I think, think through that and, and operation, being one of those areas where we don't have an HOA, difficult. Sometimes, because people in, in, sometimes people on an HOA, we want to be left alone. And I kind of laugh when you were talking about what's beautiful to some people, beautiful is being left alone enough. Who told what to do with their property? So I didn't really have my, my hand up. I was more just thinking through it, and you, you looked at me and made a gesture.
I thought I saw it. But that's okay. All right, should we go with diversity, equity, and inclusion?
Can I just say one more? On that transferring, transparency and accountability is, and I'm continuing to hear this more often, is understanding or having our boards communicate what they're working on to the community. And that's different from the conversation that we had on a couple bullet points above where we're working with them to work on our, our strategic plan and how they fit in with ours. But specifically, once they're set, what are they working on as a board? So that people can then understand the historic landmark board is working on XYZ. And they're a part of, I don't think people realize, actually, I'm pretty sure that, even though it was advertised, I don't think people realize that the historic tours were in partnership were with the Westminster Historical Society and our Historic Landmark Board and the city of Westminster. But I don't think that community members realize that they had a large hand in working with staff on that. And so I think any way that we can help communicate that to our residents and the public on what they're working on would be great.
I didn't know to that. All right, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Achieve equitable processes for the people of Westminster by providing opportunity for all voices to be heard and drawing upon community diversity in decision-making. Any thoughts or reflections on that one? Yes, Counselor Nirmala.
There was this one, I know it's hard to reach out and be able to, you know, tackle every, you know, minority population that we have and, and culture and ethnicity that we have in the city because it's pretty diverse. But there are some areas where we could still improve upon what we're already doing. I, there was one, one, it's just, I, I forgot to mention it earlier, but there's one report out where we were talking about having culturally diverse events in the community. And one of them that was reported was, we had in Kanto, like, a movie. That's not really an event to, you know, a real cultural affair. Yes, there's those. There were some. And my point is that we had some good ones, but, but, you know, if we didn't get our, couldn't, didn't fight meet our KPI, let's just be honest with, okay, we're still working on this, we're still developing connections, and we're still, you know, finding ways to create events that are responsive to our community, but not to report on something that I think was disingenuous of, you know, what we're really trying to do. Because that's not, I think, representative of our overall principle of really trying to reach out and reflect voices and.
Portem.
Kind of along those lines. I think it would be nice where we promote those activities of those different demographics that already are doing things inside the city. So, for example, like hop spin, I know in the past, you know, we have a large mom population, they do a lot of neat events in the city. And so toast to us, and I'm not against, like, the cultural event that we did was great, with the world cultural thing down in historic Westminster. But are there opportunities where their populations already existing doing events that we just partner with, opposed us trying to figure out what makes sense for us to come up with? Because, I mean, that's really getting at the different folks who actually live in the city and figuring out how we can partner with them. Because I think one of the other things that's interesting, depending on the demographic, a lot of times, depending on where in the world they came from, they might be distrusting of government. And so that's kind of a two-for-building bridge and, you know, highlighting the diversity of the city and partnering. So it might be an opportunity where we go after that.
Saturday night was a perfect example with our Rotarians. They had our Armenian group of students coming around, and Mark told them they could use the Mac. We had at least 200 people there. And the Armenian community that was there, I knew several of them, and they were having a blast. But for those of us that weren't Armenian, I loved every minute of their music and seeing the instruments that they played. And I even did live video, so those that, because it was a snowy night, and I thought, oh, some people maybe didn't come. And it's, they keep watching and thanking us for helping make that. But it was a rotary that came. City work with, a prime example of getting 200 people together and learning about another culture.
That's an example of two of your guiding principles integrating together, the collaboration and partnership along with the diversity, equity, and inclusion, so.
This is fantastic.
Yeah.
You also just approved a cultural facility.
Yeah.
In Historic Westminster, so.
Bonus?
Yep.
Oh, yes.
So I think, so I agree with everyone. And looking at that, so the 2021 Social Pinpoint Survey and the 2020 Community Survey both said our biggest areas of improvement are cultural affairs and recreation. And when we talk about the EI and finding the existing, right? And pulling up the existing, elevating that and connecting them like what we do with the Mac, this probably calls for some kind of beacon of communication from us out to the community more often that says, hey, what's going on, right? We intake that and then we see if we can actually connect those people with our resources, like use this center or use that and then connect us, council, to, to those and just bring them into city council, too, and have them give a, a study session, right? Of what's going on? You know, we could have a whole study session on cultural affairs. What's happening around the city, when, that kind of stuff. And just make it less of an event, so it's not just one or two times a year that we talk about someone's culture and more of a ongoing, everyday thing that normalizes it. Because I think that's the, the goal of the EIs to normalize it to the everyday, not just have one event here and there.
Thank you, Councilor Zadi. All right, shall we move to innovate and initiate? Foster a culture of continuous improvement and approach opportunities and challenges with drive, inventive thinking and resourcefulness, resulting in a resilient and sustainable future for our city. Thoughts, reflections? Mayor Pretem.
Just to reiterate, this may go back to this, doing things this way. Some other things such as thrift, where we're thinking about how we're going about business and making sure we're doing it in ways that we're really thinking through the process that gives it the best value. Because a lot of times that drives thrift because if you're being the most efficient, like Mark had mentioned, that's, you know, going to drive that. So I think it's important to know how these intertwined in my mind.
Yes, Councilor Seymour.
I see this, too. Going up to, to the thrift part is that I, I look at the way initiated as far as an ask by council and then to get creative with how we're going to replace the municipal court.
Yeah.
And, and looking at that and saying, okay, what we have here is not fixable. How are we then going to fix that problem and where are we going to find that money? So that's where the thrift comes in. It's not necessarily, you know, we can take money from here and not, not spending it on something that would have been a mistake and, and spend it in a better way that'll be more lasting, secure and safe. So I am happy with where this is going.
Councilor Baker.
I see this as one of our greatest failures.
The innovate and initiate?
Yeah, innovate and initiate. As my colleagues know, I am extraordinarily disappointed with having the same tired, unworkable, too expensive plan for a water plant on Westminster Boulevard. I mean, we chose Water 2025 in a more expensive version that in 20 years will cost us $300 million more. I, I think there were lots of ways to innovate. On the west side of US 36 is really West Cliff Park, which is at the same elevation as the Niiver Canal. It's like we never even looked at that. I think there are lots of ways we could have brought this to a more full life and we did not.
Other thoughts or reflections on this guiding principle? Here.
What comes to my mind is the pre, the post and whatever we're in now with the pandemic and how our economic development crew, how staff, how everybody really listened, especially to our restaurant people and the changes they had to make to survive and how they've come together and some of those things they needed have become sort of every day now. And, and we have some different ways of being able to have an experience. I've sat through too many lunches or dinners at some of these places and the owner comes out to talk and ends up just, I feel like I have my shingle out because they just bare their soul and tears flow. But the bottom line is they know the city was with them. They helped them and their biggest fear was could they still pay their staff? But the city was constantly there. What else do you need? How could we help communicating with them? That has come through loud and clear. I don't care which restaurant I've been in, big or small, mom or pop. And I just don't think we give behind-the-scenes people, economic development, those folks that do some of this stuff, enough kudos for how they listened. They had to bring things back because things needed approval. But then to whoever the magicians are to cut red tape and let it happen, it took all of those people. To me, that's, that's innovative and initiative to make something work so that these businesses didn't go out of business.
Councilor Zadi.
That, that comes back to the communication, right? There's a bunch of stuff happening that people don't know about. That's, those kind of stories should be pushed out.
Councilor Nirmala.
I also think just the way that we approached code enforcement and even box court, you know, just kind of going, just not throwing our, our process to the wind, but just kind of, you know, just addressing things and getting something done. And in, you know, the code update even just to allow us to address graffiti at the abatement process, you know, that it's just, okay, it's not working this way. So how do we just get past it and do this efficiently? But I like that. I like, you know, this, the city overall, I mean, why I love Westminster is I've always been kind of entrepreneurial and I like being a bit of a maverick. So, you know, we can continue that.
Right. Shall we move to the last one? Prevention and proactivity. Solve problems at their source and focus on the city's policies, practices and investments on prevention and community education and addressing root causes, leading to a better quality of life and greater prosperity for all in our community. Thoughts and reflection on that guiding principle?
I would shout out to the unhoused folks and, and that whole initiative that has begun, the, the staff at every level, because it's more than one area, has worked on that. And being compassionate, but yet having, knowing where we are headed and helping get folks to that end so they can get help or calling the relatives to see times it's connecting back to family, whatever it is. These folks are the ones we should have appetitism for what they're doing or the prevention and proactivity in, in that one area. They, it's a hard, tough job. I have visited some of the camps, talked to folks that have had the frostbite, had to have fingertips taken off. And just listen to people. And with our, we initiated, we've never had, what are they called? None of our, some of the people that go out.
Navigator.
Not navigators, I just wasn't. But the navigators, we didn't have one, then we knew we needed more. The park rangers that are helping, police department, how they needed to look at things. And they have helped with their mental health folks now. So we just had to relook at something in a totally different way. We chose to be compassionate. Some people felt like that because it's worn out in their backyard and gone. And that doesn't help solve any problem. And so I feel this council has stood strong with that. Get beaten up every now and then on either Facebook, Nextdoor, or I just got a note in the mail, somebody spent an entire stamp to tell me how they felt. And you just.
It's getting expensive.
I know. So you just have to listen, stand with where we're at. And it can be one of those things you don't agree with, but that's where we're at. And so again, with what we wanted to implement, but these are the people that make it happen. And, and they don't, you know, you know, people, they're invisible to most people. And yet they're the ones making things better for some people.
That's one, Nirmala.
I think this is one where I feel like, yes, we are doing things that help us understand better root causes to, let's say, people being homeless. But I think there's some work that we could do on this one, you know, whether it's neighborhood speed management or housing stability. You know, are we really tackling those reasons and elements? And is there more we can be doing?
Right. If that, if it's okay, I'd like to wrap up the discussion on guiding principles. Thank you for talking it through and also for offering examples of how you believe those guiding principles are being followed and some examples of how you believe they aren't maybe totally being followed. So we took notes on all of that and that's one area that I think can continue to evaluate yourselves and assess, you know, are we really holding to those principles and in what ways aren't we? And then what do we need to do about that? So before we go more into the details, I'd like to have you look at the five strategic priorities in alignment with the vision statements. We go to this part of your packet and Cody has put the vision statement. Can you just size that just a little bit? Okay. All right. Sorry. So for this part of it, what I ask you to do is to look at the five priorities that you chose as focus areas to progress on that vision statement and just look at that and say, are these still the correct focus areas? So has anything changed so dramatically that you think you would need to adjust the five priority areas? So if you kind of flashback to February through April when we were working on this plan, you carefully chose these five, five areas as the focus areas to implement and move towards your long-term vision. So my preference here, unless you tell me you want to operate differently, would be to not go through each of these one by one, but just to say, yes, these are the right focus areas and then we can go do the deeper dive into each strategic priority. Does my ask of you, is my ask of you clear? Does it make sense? Yeah. So a quick look down at those five bolded areas and say, yes, no? Yes, these are still the right focus areas. No, they are not. So you have preparedness and resilience, proactive public safety, shared sense of community, quality of life and robust infrastructure. And, you know, if, if you want to read the goal statement to be clear about what that encompasses, you can do that. Those goal statements are listed there. Anyone feel there's any need for adjustment of any of these five priorities? Still the right focus areas?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, sounds good. So now we would look at each priority and the objectives and KPIs associated with it. So probably working off of this document that Cody has displayed on screen would be the most useful. So what we're not going to do is we are not going to go through each single objective. What I'd like for you to do are call out any changes you might see or any refinements you might see based on the bulk of those objectives. So for example, if you thought there was a new one or one that, an objective that needed some revision based on the questions you were asking over the past couple of days and based on your understanding of where you are in terms of implementation of the strategic plan and what's going on in the community. So let's look at the objectives first as a whole and look for any gaps that you perceive. And then we can decide whether or not there's a new objective that need, is needed or whether there's just a refinement of an existing objective. So I'm going to pause and give you a chance to look at them. And your focus would be primarily on the ones in the left-hand column. The ones in the gap column are further descriptions of what they're actually doing to achieve your council's strategic objectives.
We're doing them one by one or I call the blue header one?
I would, I would suggest looking through the objectives for this entire strategic priority and identifying if you perceive any gaps or refinements. And so then you can, any one of you can call out a strategic objective and say, for example, 1.2, I think it needs a little refocusing. And we do have staff that want to present something, but I, I want to just take a moment and have you reflect on the objectives. And then staff want to talk about one of the KPIs that they'd like to offer some guidance on.
That's two hands up.
Okay, yes.
Nirmala, Mayor Pretem.
It's Councilor Nirmala.
Yes. All right, so for 1.2, our, our performance measures, one is just to, you know, it's like, are we hearing from our employees? I don't know if that's telling us anything. And then the second one is the turnover rate. I think I still, I'll just go back to what I said earlier is, you know, just where, is there a measure where we can understand, are we promoting from within? Are we diversifying our management? And, you know, just how are we doing with respect to?
I'm going to ask staff to address that. So can you put a pin in that for just a second? And regarding the measure of community engagement, just wanted to mention that the Gallup Q12 is benchmarked and trended over time and you can also benchmark yourselves against other organizations. So that wouldn't, that Gallup Q12 is not just a measure of whether we're hearing from our employees. It's 12 different pieces that measure, measure actual engagement. And it's, it's trended over time. It's trended against a national benchmark. So I just wanted to be clear, everybody understood what, what that 1.2A performance metric really is.
That was helpful.
Yeah.
Are we only doing 1.2 right now?
No, but just, yeah, so we called that out. We're going to have staff talk about the, the measurement that you're, that you referred to. Mayor Pretem had something as well.
One more.
Okay, yeah, we can capture that.
The other one was with respect to 1.3A where we're talking about the redevelopment toolkit. Coming up, one of our measures, because we have a bunch going into, you know, how much square footage of space do we have? But do we have a, we're looking at vacancy rates, is that a measure of success or not? Or that, is that just a, you know, kind of a temperature? That'd just be a question.
Okay, so I made a note of that. So let's get your comments and then we'll come back to it. Let staff comment. So Mayor Pretem, do you have something in this particular focused area that you'd like to call out?
Particular one or can I move to different?
No, you can move to any of the objectives that are in the preparedness and resilience of this area. We're going priority by priority. Anybody else have anything for number one? Councilor Zadi has.
So I think that, I was trying to decide if this is the right fit for this, but just looking at the definition of preparedness and resilience, build a system of intentional support for residents, businesses. build a system of intentional support for residents, businesses and the environment. The objectives we have cover clients and businesses. Specifically, the business one says create a structured, implemented system of support for our business community to mitigate this type of resiliency. But we don't have anything for residents. I think we need an objective for economic resilience for our residents.
All right, let's, let's go ahead and entertain that. Maybe talk about what that objective should be focused on. Do a quick break if you need to, since we've got audio, trying to confirm whether we have audio or not.
Which one are we talking about now?
So we are under the strategic priority of the preparedness and resilience. And there have been a couple of questions regarding.
Give us like 1.1A, 1I.
Yes, I'm going to do that. So I was taking initial thoughts first on the objectives. We've got some KPIs. So we're going to talk about objectives first and then we'll have staff talk about the KPI suggestions that were raised. So my question is just.
Can you direct me to hear?
Does anybody have anything else on 1.2, 1.1, 1.2 and 1.3 in terms of a gap? Or anything you think that needs adjustment? So we're looking for gaps. Is there a new objective that you perceive as being needed? Or can we refine or adjust any of the existing objectives to bring more focus to what you want to do going forward? So right now, what we have on the table for objectives is a question or a request that we develop an objective, a new objective that addresses prosperity for, for resiliency for residents. That was a suggested possible new objective that I was going to open up the floor for a discussion on. Counselor Baker.
Good.
Yeah, we're, we're broadcasting. We just lost the connectivity. That's.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Counselor Baker.
1.2.
Like an explanation of why this call.
The staff is going to report on that in a second. That one's already, that's, that one's already been flagged as one that they want to present some thoughts to you on. So, so we will go to the KPIs second. What I'd like to do first is Counselor Azadi has suggested a possible new objective under this, if we added it, it would be a 1.4. And his suggestion is we don't have a resiliency objective that addresses resiliency for residents. So I want to put that out to the council for discussion. Your thoughts? And maybe a question to Counselor Azadi first, what could that possibly look like?
So one idea could be similar to 1.3. Be create a, so create a structured system of support for our residents to promote, to promote resiliency. But then we pick one or two things, very specific things for the focus objectives. I'm thinking something about food desert, maybe, or cost of living to help relieve the insane unsustainable levels of cost of living for our residents that's happening right now. Something around those that is a missing element that is in our strategic priorities language.
Thoughts from the other counselors? Counselor Baker?
What would that be? Counselor Azadi, what would that be?
I gave two examples. I gave two.
Examples were.
Say food desert, what does that mean? I know what a food desert is, but you propose that we subsidize a grocery store in that area? Or what would it specifically be?
Well, the way we developed these, these objectives, we developed the objective and then staff came back with the specific KPIs. If we are tasked with giving these specific ideas to new process, I mean, I mean, I could be specific if you want me to, but that wasn't the process we took to make that. I think we get the objective and the staff comes back and gives suggestions, which is what we did with these other ones.
And I think we absolutely could tonight entertain, if you do have specific ideas for what those more tactical things would be for this one, you know, because it's a new suggested objective, that that would be helpful. Yes, Mayor Potem and then Counselor Nirmala.
I don't find myself in between what both of you said because I don't disagree with what you said as far as this goes. But in order for me to say that it should be on here, I want to understand what kind of tangible thing that municipal government that's within confines of role of municipal government, what that would be. I'm just trying to think, think through like, I don't want to give a task to something that is not something that staff's going to be able to come back with an actionable, within the realm of city government way to accomplish what you're asking for. That makes sense. That's what I'm trying to understand. Like, so what, you know, what would? I want to know what would be under there and how you would achieve it? Or should you achieve it as municipal government?
Mark, would you?
If I could.
Yeah.
You know, I, I really like the idea of the, of the question about the food desert, you know? Identify where our food deserts are and the KPI becomes, I imagine the staff will come back and say, you know, that we either need to, you know, identify a grocer to occupy and eliminate that food desert or we incentivize a grocer, you know, through some means. I don't know what exactly is at our disposal, but to bring a grocer into the, into the area. But I think that's, you know, that's a viable KPI, you know, for resilience for our residences. Residents, excuse me. But, you know, that certainly makes sense to me that that would be a viable, not only objective, but a KPI to that.
Counselor Nirmala?
So as a planner, I'll be like a food access plan or at least an assessment. And, and strategy. And, you know, another area is around housing stability. And another area could be around access to transit, you know, especially for households that are in, that are older, right? We have the via transit, but I think it's, would it be funded for a year or something? Yeah. And so that's something to look at is for those people who don't have access to, easy access to, to groceries or, you know, shopping or neighborhood amenities. How do they, and they don't drive? How can we help them stay housed in their homes by, you know, continuing something like, you know, via transit where it does provide them with on-call transit rides to these types of locations? So that would be, that's an example of housing stability combined with transit.
It sounds like what you're proposing is like, is assessing that in those areas. Assessing it for food access, assessing it for transit and assessing it for housing stability.
I don't know if it's, you know, assessing housing stability and transit piece, but it's that, that could be a, you know, a, a measure or I should say an action that would help foster people staying in their homes. Because now if they, even if they can't drive, they don't have to, I don't know, move to Kansas. I have no idea like where do you live if you can't afford any place here. It's, it gives you the access you need and.
So you can see up on screen, Cody's capturing these draft ideas. Now, this is, this is very helpful to be able to see it real time on the screen. So you can react to it and suggest any, ask questions or suggest any modifications. Yes, Mayor Potem.
Devil's advocate here. It's because these, these things have been talked about since I've been here. And there's so much outside of the control of government. I mean, you look at the areas in the city where food deserts are. There have been multiple attempts at grocers that have been subsidized and the market has not sustained it for whatever reason. You know, so, you know, again, I, I'm just trying to understand feasibly what it, what it looks like. Because, or even transportation, like how, how, how are you going to do that where it's? They're not bad things. I'm just trying to understand how they intersect with municipal government, what we fund and what we actually control. Because I don't see that they're not problems. I just don't, I haven't, I don't know that there's something that we're going to be able to solve and spending resources and money on them. And there are areas that are municipal government that we could solve. So if you look at like food, trying to attract the grocers and stuff, I don't have a problem. I want to keep trying to do the same thing that failed. I mean, I'm the only one who feels that way. I mean, specifically about a grocer. I mean, if you look at the area off 72nd and Federal, how many different grocery stores have been into that same spot?
Three.
And then right up the street, how many other ones were up there? You know, the Safeway.
I'm actually counting the line up that, that Sheridan, that food market gave $150,000 to.
84th and Federal, there was a Safeway. I'm, I don't think it's not a problem. I just want to understand how we make a goal that gives room to actual success. I mean, I want it to be successful. I want there to be, but how, how do we as a government affect those things in a way that's meaningful and sustainable and longstanding?
Counselor Mance. So is the objective to, to kind of review it, assess it and come back with recommendations? Or is this an area that the council does not want to incorporate into the strategic plan? I've got two more of my list. Okay. Counselor Baker. I didn't see your hand. Sorry about that. Counselor Baker. I think Counselor Emmons. Oh, Counselor Emmons.
What I'd like to see for this objective, for adding an objective is to follow our studies that we've put out. Because in November, we had a citywide retail strategy update from staff that went through and pinpointed where we're lacking, what's here, what's not, what we need to focus on. And my biggest beef with it is now what? And so what I'd like to see is that objective be that we actually implement and actually take care of what the study is saying that we're lacking. So, and it does say that there's quantifiable leakage in four categories. One is automotive. It does list food and beverage at home, primarily grocery stores appears to be leaking, health and personal care. So I like us to really focus and dive in into what we've already accomplished here to say, this is what we need to focus on and here's where we're lacking. It's right here. We have a, a plan. I don't think it, it's too much to ask to say, what is the KPI out of this? We've spent money on the study. Now we make strides to, to figure out the gaps from there.
Counselor Baker.
I don't think any of these is core city functions. That's not what I want Westminster to do. And as Mayor Potem pointed out, we've had failure after failure after failure. These were honest, fully supported plans to do something there. And they failed. And I think we should stop wasting the taxpayers' money though.
Counselor Nirmala?
So, you know, groceries, they have been pulling back in location and they are really hard to locate right now. And I'm not saying let's go force a grocery into an area where it's difficult to put them and for them to invest. But kind of going back to, we have an assessment, but we need an implementation plan that's clearly spelling out, well, how then do we get people to access housing? So for instance, Counselor Baker, at some point in the next 10 years, you might not be driving. And, you know, you may be living alone. And so how do you go get your food? You know, your, or any, or to your, you know, your doctor's appointments. You know, I personally have to go pick up my mom and take her, she lives in Colorado Springs. So there, there are, there are real issues that people are facing for lack of access and lack of ability to get to places where they need to go. And for, but, you know, truly just things that can help them stay in their, in their homes. So, you know, we're already as a government, funding a year of transit. Already doing that, like a lot of us voted for it. So that's something that could be a piece of this, right? Keeping people, like going towards housing stability. We're, we're supporting a cultural market on the 73rd and Lowell site that theoretically could have a farmer's market. Well, how might that play a role if we're going to put money into that and support that? I think there's things we're already doing that are not necessarily tied yet to something like this or could be evaluated to be extended or expanded that makes sense for this objective. So that's, that's what I was trying to point out.
So Mayor Potem and then Counselor Seymour.
I think that you make some really good points. I guess what I would ask if we're going to do this is we're not doing the same thing. I think you, Counselor Mance, has really a point, done research. Counselor Nirmala has a good point. There's a different way that we're going after it. So I guess that calling out the, you know, we have a problem with food access because that is a quality of life issue, you know, no matter how you look at it. But do we have partners that it's more about getting people toward the foods that if we can't get the food toward the people are at, I guess? So I'd be open to it, but I'd want a really thought out KPI that, you know, really thinks this problem. Because I, I do think there's been a lot of effort and time spent on, you know, trying to make grocers succeed in an area where it just hasn't happened. Doesn't mean I wouldn't love to see that change. I mean, obviously, if you even look at what we're trying to do in the TOD or the downtown, we're trying to change conditions so that businesses can. Meantime, maybe rethink how we get, you know, focused where the food is.
Counselor Seymour and then Counselor Azadi.
And I agree with Mayor Potem and Counselor Nirmala and Counselor Emmons in that this may be best suited in what are, what, what we should do as a municipal government under the quality of life and that we, what's important to us is retail leakage. And so if we can emphasize on retail leakage and we can, and, and include that into the study that was there because we need those retail sales dollars, the end result then is more stable food sources. Because that is a huge, that is a big category.
Counselor Azadi.
Yeah, I think retail leakage can solve the root cause of why a grocer cannot survive in a particular geography. But I, I do just to comment on what Counselor Baker said, I, I do believe it is in the role of city government to care about its, its citizens' quality of life. And as such, if we've done things that have failed, right? We don't want to do the same thing to what, to what Mayor Potem said. You know, we just went through this, right? Innovate and initiate, right? Let's, then let's not do the same thing. Let's do it better. Let's be creative. Let's actually do, initiate something that can help our residents' quality of life. That is the role of city government.
So this is, go ahead, Baron.
I shared with council that I got a phone call. We do have a grocery store. It's just not open. You have to do it online and they deliver to whomever within 30 minutes. And that's housed at 74th and there's no leakage because the people can't go in and steal anything. They're delivering to you. We also have a big market at 72nd and Sheridan that sits in Walmart. So we have markets. It's maybe we need to help them promote. The woman that I talked to at GoPuff would be welcome to anybody coming and doing a tour. So you know what it is. They've been here for several years and they explain how they set up in a community, what they do. It's $8 for the month for delivery. King Supercharge is 15 for one delivery. And if you want to do it just one time, it's $4. So that part is very inexpensive. I asked how they compare with the other grocers and they're pretty much in line. So we do have a resource. and they're pretty much in line. So we do have a resource down there that probably very few are knowledgeable about, but they're willing to share what they're doing instead of trying to reinvent the wheel again.
Okay, Councilor Asadi.
And just one more point to that. I like the idea of taking the existing data collection that we've, also our partners growing home has done. They did a whole study on this too. But converting that into a food access plan that talks through, okay, here are all the organizations we can partner with to do X, Y, Z, those existing places, you know, that just pulls it all together in one place so that we have a direction, a strategy of where, where we want to go, where we can go. And then you can develop the KPIs from there. But I like the idea of just pulling all together into a food access plan, like Sarah said.
So this is a work session and, and all the changes to the plan are going to come back to you for a vote. So I think from a process standpoint, what I'd like to suggest is that we've got some of the draft material up there that staff might need to take and work with a bit. But it sounds to me, as your facilitator, that there is adequate support to put something like this into the plan. One suggestion was to put it under quality of life as opposed to here. But could I just ask if there's any more conversation around this? And then this item as a potential new objective would come back to you for a vote at your, at the council meeting that this will be put on the agenda for? Are we good with that as a, as a, as a step? Am I, any, any disagreement? Councilor Baker, you disagree?
I don't think it's a city function.
Anyone else before we leave this topic? It is coming back to you for a vote. And we'll probably do, be able to do a little bit of refinement of the language. Any thoughts? So did we put it in quality of life, Cody, or was that just a question mark?
That's a question mark because they prefer to say quality of life.
And I would just ask the question, does, does folks have thoughts about where it's best positioned as a, as a draft, as a proposed draft new objective? Mayor Protam and then Councilor Numala.
It's more quality of life. People have a couple of different legs. Because if you talk about the partners we have, I, you know, I think of Senior Resource Center, just because I've worked on their board and they do a lot of the same thing, you know, whether it's grocery or you've mentioned like doctor visits and stuff. So I see it as more of a quality of life and there might be opportunity for us to become the partners in what they do and how they can help these demographics of folks. And I, you know, so I do think it's a quality of life thing in my mind.
Councilor Numala?
I was going to say it depends on what you're focusing on. So that's all. You know, if it's like transit or housing stability, it could go one way or the other, depending on which, you know, like, again, where the KPI is going, what you're actually trying to do. So stability for me can go towards long-term resilience for residents because they have options on how to stay in their homes and how to live their lives. So again, it just, I don't think I have a dog in the fight in terms of where exactly it ends, ends up, but.
Staff, do you need any more guidance from the council in terms of being able to take this and bring it back into a draft that they look at? And, okay. Okay. So now we have two KPIs that we want to look at. So I'm going to turn this over to staff on what was specifically called out on the first page of the document, 1.2.2. So staff's going to present on that. And then after that, we're going to talk about the question that was asked about vacancy rates as some of the measures for the structured system to support businesses, which is 1.2. So go ahead, staff.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and Councilors for the opportunity to talk about this KPI. We appreciate that. We hope this will be fairly straightforward. This is 1.2BI. As you know, we are very intensely focused on hiring, recruiting, and retaining the workforce that provides core services to our community. We've been providing a regular report to you that we continue to refine and enhance. We've been doing that for the last year. We're not at all backing down from this KPI. We just want to, we see an opportunity to refine it, make it a little bit more straightforward, and frankly, to have it mesh with the report that you've been receiving. So I'd like to invite Interim Human Resources Director Marty Erickson to just talk a little bit about these words and how we can evolve them with 1.2BI. Thank you, Marty.
Okay.
I think this is fairly straightforward.
Okay. I'm going to tower over you. So, yeah, we wanted to discuss the, mostly the language that we used when we first developed this. We, we use the terminology turnover rate. But what we've actually been reporting to you on a monthly basis in the workforce report is a vacancy rate. They are two different things in the world of HR, and I could go into that detail if you care about it, but you probably don't. So we'd really like to change, first of all, the terminology to vacancy rate versus turnover rate. The numbers that we have been reporting to you are more of a vacancy rate. However, we'd like to modify those a little bit too. What we report to you, well, now we're reporting to you two things in that workforce report. You're getting what we call our recruiting vacancy, meaning in other words, if, if we've been given notification that someone's going to retire in three months, we, we add them to that number. So that, that, excuse me, the 15.8 that was reported in 2021, that was our recruiting vacancy at that point in time. And the last number that we reported as of November here, which I think was 13.1, that was known recruitments that we are going to have to do, known vacancies that we're going to have to have. What we would actually like to start reporting, which is a little more true to industry, is a true vacancy rate, which just looks at who's vacant on your payroll right now compared to how many authorized FTEs that you have. And so that is a lower number because it doesn't take into consideration, although we're still managing those recruitments we know are going to be coming up. As far as a KPI and reporting that number, getting to that true vacancy report, which actually, that number is what you're now seeing on that monthly report that's broken out by department. So that last one you received was 8.58%. That is a true HR industry standard vacancy rate based on how many vacant positions we have currently on payroll versus how many authorized positions we have to fill. So that is what we would like to change that number to, vacancy rate, and then the actual true vacancy rate versus our recruiting vacancy rate, which we're constantly working on.
Marty, can you describe for them why industry standard of the vacancy rate, the true vacancy rate is a better or more useful metric than, than what we think of as turnover?
Yeah. Vacancy rate, you can pick any point in time and determine what your vacancy rate is. So we can look at the end of May and get a vacancy rate, or the end of the year, December, where are we at at the end of the year. Whereas turnover rate is a cumulative number. In the industry, we look at turnover rate at the end of each month. And then at the end of the quarter, we add up the turnover rate for each month, and that is our turnover rate for the end of the quarter. At the end of the year, you add up all four quarters. That's your turnover rate for the whole year. It doesn't really give you a point in time picture like vacancy rate does. So that's why we're thinking that's more in line of what we were trying to get at here. It's not talking about retention at all, though. Like, I get rated on my turnover rate as a public employee. So what, this isn't retention. This is just a cleaner number that looks lower. Well, turnover rate results in, when you're looking at your turnover, that is what results in your vacancy rate. So it's all kind of built in there. I see what you're saying. And it's not that we're not in HR or sharing with our, our departments what that information is. But we're just thinking for this particular KPI, when you're talking about filling those police positions, how many vacant positions do we have? How many have we filled? Vacancy rate is a truer number for this particular KPI. Okay. Because this doesn't, that has nothing to do with retention. So this is more like, do we have people in the jobs to do the services? Yes. I think it does have a bit to do with retention because if your vacancy rate keeps going up, you're not retaining people. It is a piece of it.
I think the other reason for this KPI, if I could add to it, is we're trying to stabilize our workforce post-pandemic here. And after a lot of challenging law enforcement reforms in our state, I think version 2.0 or 3.0 of this in the future will probably involve metrics that include retention and some of the diversity items that you described, Councilor Numala. So I think for the moment, we're very focused on the headcount of our workforce so that we can deliver those, those core services. And as Marty put it, we're intensely focused on filling our police officer positions so that we can achieve full strength, which is another one of our KPIs further down, which, which we don't recommend changing. But Mayor Protam?
I hear what you're saying. And I guess my concern specifically with police, and I think a lot of this came out of police discussion, is if there's too much churn that we're not seeing, I'm concerned because I want to know that we're starting to get some institutional knowledge and experience back. I think the most damaging thing that we saw in policing in Colorado is the amount of knowledge and training folks that we've lost. And I think that we're not alone across the country where you're seeing that be damaging in that particular workforce. So I'm not necessarily against it, but I want to call out that that's probably my hesitation, just because I think it is really important for, for that job, for people to start getting some of that knowledge. I think that's true in any, any job. But specifically, that was a personal concern of mine, as you saw so much turnover that we were, we were losing people who understood policing in a way that was, that created good police, police officers.
And, and as I said, there are all sorts of statistics we do track in HR, turnover rate, retention rate. We can add additional KPIs to this if you desire.
Councilor Asadi?
What's the formula D for retention rate? What's the formula?
Sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
I mean, so vacancy rate is open positions divided by your total filled, right?
Open positions divided by your total authorized positions.
Authorized. So what, I imagine it's that simple. So what's a, shouldn't we know that? Is the simple, what's the retention reform? What's the difference? Is what I'm trying to get at.
I just don't have that off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
Let's say your retention rate is, is the vacancy rate.
Right.
It is.
Yeah, generally.
Yeah.
It's like this, as much as that.
More difficult than that.
Life, that's a whole.
Yeah, but, but it's along those lines.
Divided by time.
Time's not involved. It's not real. But, but, but along Mayor Protam's questioning, more than just retention rate, our years of service of employees, right? The experience and the knowledge you're retaining.
Well, and the other part of it, frankly, with, with, again, that's that specific workforce, you're fighting over the same people a lot of times. So that's the other thing. I want to know if Thornton is doing some sort of incentive that's, you know, stealing people we've trained. I want to know that. So, you know, that's part of the other thing. Because I mean, that's going to be a constant battle. We're, you know, we're, we can't give all the money in the world, but we certainly can look at what kind of benefits we're providing that going to make this the most attractive place in the North Metro area to work. So I guess that's my other concern. I, you probably could tackle those two things in a different way that doesn't affect this. So like, if you want to say, you know, here's a way that the police department can specifically look at those areas. Or we as an organization, if, say, the concerned area starts to be in the fire service, like that, that we have a way to look in, in, I guess, have a heat map of, hey, we have a problem here. Why are we losing people to other departments? And why are we having a revolving door? Because that's, you know, really what I want.
Councilor Asadi?
Idea of comparative analysis. I think that's what I'm more interested in too. Do other municipalities use a true vacancy rate like we switched to? And if so, how do we compare by department? I think could be apples to apples point. Could be interesting.
We could definitely try and get that information from our comparison cities. The National Bureau of Labor Statistics definitely tracks this type of information. I can drill down to state and local government less minus education. And I could tell you what those vacancy rates are.
Yep. There's data available.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yep.
So what's the guidance? Do you all want, oh, I'm sorry. Please?
Yeah. Where do the goals come? They seem to be completely arbitrary.
Oh, well, it's just us striving for improvement. We look back on, you know, what were we pre, what were our vacancy rates pre-COVID, which were quite low. They're 3.96, something like that. So when we talk about our goal, for instance, for 2023, which we would have to change those because we're already lower than 9% if you look at a true vacancy rate. So we wanted to establish a new and better goal for 2023. But it's, it's a goal. We hope to achieve that. We're going to try to achieve that through our efforts of hiring and filling the citizens.
It is. So it is just really arbitrarily set.
The future, yeah, your future goals. Yes.
And it wouldn't necessarily be arbitrarily set if you chose to do the comparative analysis, which lets you know, what does the national statistic look like overall for local government? And then what are the comparative, the comparative cities that you choose to benchmark against?
Which, so just for instance, the Bureau of Labor Statistics only has through November of 2022 so far, and the national, state, and local non-education is 5.6%.
Vacancy rate?
Vacancy rate. Yeah. So we thought 5% would be pretty good to shoot for.
I think that goes, I think that goes to Councilor Baker's point is, why, like, that seems arbitrary, like, by five, 5.6 is your number, your baseline, but.
As of November 2022, we're, we're talking about 2023 numbers. Where do we want to be in 2023? I'd like to be at zero, quite frankly, but. Zero because turnover costs money. Right. You have hiring bonuses. You have training time, you have, you know, lost time. Sometimes you have to go out and get consultant work or some other type of work, you know, to fill in for people who are missing. So it's all of these things, they factor in a lot.
The intent would be to drive it as low as possible. And the only comparator we have is what the BLS has in terms of national average. And then you can get the comparative data by other local governments that you could consider to be similar to you. But that's about the only benchmarks available to know. And then again, just trying to draw the number as, as low as you can is really the objective. Yes.
Well, and I don't have any beef against arbitrary. I mean, a lot of the goals we set have to be arbitrary. I have proposed arbitrary goals to other people. I've become very upset with that. But sometimes that's the only management tool you have.
I think that's.
We need to acknowledge what it is.
Yeah. And I think the very point that you're making is why a lot of local governments try to benchmark against whatever national data is available and what other, what their, what they would consider to be their sister or brother, local government communities are, because that, otherwise it truly is absolutely arbitrary. So do you all need any more guidance on this? Does the council want to provide any more guidance before we have staff like work up a change and bring it back?
I like what Mayor Protam brought up of just, are there two? You know, so that we understand the vacancy rate, right? And just how much of a lift we have and how much service we're providing, but also the turnover rate. Because again, that adds a cost to it if we're, you know, earnings, especially if it's in a specific department, where we're paying a lot of people to come in and train them and then they leave. We can report on both, definitely.
Thank you. Yeah. Well, indeed.
Got what you needed on that?
I'm sorry?
These are the non-education jobs.
Right. Yeah. The, the BLS, Bureau of Labor Statistics, does break out state and local government minus education. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
So for 1.3, which is on the second page, Councilor Numala asked about measuring vacancy rates. So there are three measures there. There's existing jobs. There's year-over-year percentage change in existing jobs. And there's annual workshops for local businesses. annual workshops for local businesses. And so you were asking the question, do we need another KPI? Did I frame that right?
Yeah.
Which staff can answer that? What, what the option is there? I assume that's something that you track.
Yeah, it is. Sorry, our director, Becca Nogdell, got stuck in Tucson because her flight was canceled, so she's online with me here. So can we get, I just want to get her input on this question. So it may take a minute or two.
Sure.
Do you want to move on to the next one?
Yeah, let's move on to the next priority and get that at its appropriate stopping point, we'll come back.
Someplace warm right now. You got to tend to all.
Okay, we are moving to proactive public safety again. Process check here is that you're taking a look at the objectives. Are there any gaps? Are any adjustments needed? And then we can dive into any additional KPIs that you might want to focus on. So Mayor Protem, you've got the floor. You had your hand raised first.
Imagine I jumped ahead of this.
I know you did.
This is back to what we brought up earlier and kind of jumped ahead of the process as far as some of the things we asked about in combating some of the particular crime or speeding. I don't feel that there, it's, it's called out enough in the actual first part of it, objectives. I see, or is there's, you know, some flavor of it saying 2.3B? But there was a, if I remember right, we, there's not a majority that agrees with us. I think the majority did agree that we wanted to focus on actual combating some of the crimes that we've seen in, in the state, some of the, the racing. We, I hear about that kind. I feel it constantly driving down the street, people that lost their ever loving mind when it comes to driving an automobile.
A lot of speedometers must be broken.
Yeah. It's, it's gotten to the point where if you're not speeding, you're going to get run off the road. I mean, it's horrifying. But I want, I want that called out because I think that in order to be serious about it, it should be somewhere in the first portion of this. And I don't know if that means to, you know, 2.4 or if we can massage 2.3 since there is some flavor that it can be, but that would be the one called out.
We could set up that corner with insurance guide.
This was a theme that came through in several of your comments upfront when we were talking about guiding principles, we were talking about mission and vision. You know, you called out some of the safety concerns, speeding in particular, car thefts in particular. What do you think is the best way to get some focus to this? Would it be a new objective? Or if not a new objective, how would you adjust 2.3 to bring more focus to those things? Councilor Nermal and then Councilor Seymour.
I could see also adding it in, well, there's a piece of it, not all of it, that could be added into 2.1 as a focus objective where we have a neighborhood speed management program or plan that starts to identify and address where our biggest issue areas are and really start to, you know, we've had so many comments come in and I know it's so frustrating where we say that doesn't warrant the signal, that doesn't. Sorry, Dave, I'm sorry. It's not really you, I'm making fun of you. It's just, it's frustrating because we, we, there, our solutions, our typical solutions don't help us at all. So is there something else we should be looking at and maybe that's found through a neighborhood speed management? And I don't know if our transportation and mobility plan has a really focused implementation plan that we're not, you know, just funding appropriately. But that's just, that's, that's just a piece of it.
Councilor Seymour, you had to stand up.
And I don't disagree with my colleagues on this as far as the safety standpoint and, and, you know, we, we constant emails about speeding and on and on and on, but, but until we get near our complement, I don't know, right now, enforcement, we're not sending, cannot send the message that we need to. You know, it's, it's, it's like, the message is if you speed in Brimfield on 120th, you're going to get kicked, bottom line. And because they have concentrated enforcement on there. We cannot send out the message that if you speed excessively in Westminster, you're going to have to pay the penalty, it doesn't matter, and we have to have this first component first, so.
Well, the part of the neighborhood speed management piece is that there are things that are impeding people from speeding, such as, you know, speed cushions or things like that, that you're not.
I like the way you put that cushion.
It's a term where it's not necessarily a speed bump, but because you can have the, fire trucks can go over it and not be completely impeded by the speed bump. So long story short, like, because there's never going to be enough police on the roads to just be able to, you know, they maybe can do, you know, geographically, you know, throughout the year, different areas, but we're just never, enforcement's never going to quite do it. That's why I think we, you know, make something else.
Mayor Protem?
Here, both of you are saying, and I'm just going to push back a bit. I don't disagree that it would be better if we had full force of cops, but there are different ways that we can approach this, and this is back to, I think, principle of being innovative. I do overtime, can we pick a street every month where we make a concerted effort to say, we're going to go after this street and the next month we're going to go out after a different street? Because eventually, maybe it's not as fast as if you had a full force where you could say, you know, 120th, you speed, you're, you're going to get it. I mean, there has to be, there has to be some fear put back in people that speeding will get you a ticket because death evidently doesn't scare anybody anymore in their vehicle. And I mean, I don't mean to sound brash, but seriously, I work in downtown three days a week and on the expressway, you want 15 over because if you don't, you're going to get run off the road. And I have people throwing their hands up, doing stuff, trying to kill both of us. And it's like, I don't even want to be going that fast in the first place, but that's the only way to get where I'm going downtown. And so I just feel like if, if we're serious about that, we need to make some sort of motion. And I don't disagree, that would be better if we had a full force, but if we could say we, you know, have some sort of objective that says we're going to go after this, even if it's in a non-traditional way, be it overtime or something else, I think that if, you know, it would go a long way to let people know that we are actually doing something because, I mean, how many times you get to comment that, you know, we can enforce it anymore? I mean, and people realize that and they drive the way that they're driving. So, you know, I, I would ask staff to come back potentially with a way that you think that you could go at with the current resources because we are resource constrained, I understand that, you know, but there's got to be a solution to it that's just more than, there's nothing we can do.
Mark, I'm looking at you.
Yeah, but I just got, got the head nod from my chief that, you know, that's something that we can, we can work on. So we come back with a.
Excellent.
KPI that kind of facilitates that intent.
Excellent. Councilor Izadi?
Just to continue on that innovation and initiation guiding principle, I think to what Councilor Nermal was saying, the prevention, that there are all sorts of creative ways that other cities are doing. That takes budget money, right? But during the budget process, I, I asked a question to the streets team, I said, is this enough money? Because we keep hearing, no, this doesn't warrant this, or we don't have enough money for that. So everything takes three, four years just to do one thing, right? And they said, no, yeah, yeah, it's fine. I don't believe that still. I think we need, if we had, if we set the intention here in the strategic objective, then that can help us in the budget process later in the year where we can actually put a lot more money into it because it seems like it's a money constraint, but when you, when we ask, do you need my money? They say no. But they do because then when we get requests from the residents, the residents are saying, hey, help, and staff comes back with, no, we can't do that. Or, yeah, we're doing that, but it's going to take three years because we have to spread the costs out, right? Or it's some cost related reason. Just need to be serious about it and put the money into it.
People need to be held accountable. That's the people doing it, they're making bad decisions. We can put up as many traffic things as we want. This man sits on this corner and watches how many cars go into a red light. I watch it every day. I'm scared to death when it's my turn to go. I look both ways first because too many people are going through, I have to go either 112th, Westminster Boulevard, or Sheridan to get out to wherever I want to go. Those are the places that are the speedways. It is not my neighborhood.
So it sounds like we got a thumbs up from the chief, but, but staff can bring something back and that it, there might be some things that can be done that fall into that guiding principle of innovate and initiate, even if resources aren't. Yes.
I would ask that Director Downing and Chief Albert work together on that.
That can happen. Jody, just checking, so are we, are we complete on strategic priority two? Because if we are, I was going to go back to strategic priority one because I think Jody's ready to refer out that vacancy KPI suggestion.
Ready for that? Yes, we can, up for your consideration of the, when we bring this back to council, a KPI that will provide a measure of citywide vacancy rates by retail office and industrial, the broader categories, much more difficult to track on a business by business levels if people change their offices, they can have one space this year and three spaces next, so it'd be very hard, but we can use an industry measurement tools, a CoStar, and we can get you standardized reporting on these, and that could be a KPI to report on that. That makes sense.
Thank you.
We'll write that.
I have a request for a break.
Excellent, we can do that too.
Right. Did I not, not. Okay. I'll. Let's go. Don't run it now. Help me, John.
Well, me, John.
You've had a day here in one of these.
Okay, we're going to dive back in. We've completed two of the strategic, two of the five strategic priorities. We have three to go, is what I'm trying to say. So the next one we're going to focus on is the shared sensitivity. Again, our processes, looking at the objectives, are there gaps or adjustments that you see that are needed? And then let's talk about those first and then the KPIs second, if you have any thoughts on those. So when you read through those, do you perceive any gaps or refinements or adjustments at this stage? Yes. Mark.
If the councilors don't have anything, I have something that I wanted to bring up here that fits in this priority. And that was, we talked conversationally as city manager and councillor about our board and commission process. And I think that perhaps under the objective of one, the focused objective of completing a review of our board and commissions themselves as far as what they do with purposes, how their staff, what their term is, and what the council expects from them. Coupled with a review of our recruitment process, our interview process, length of term or service for those members would be appropriate. I know this conversation has come up in a couple of different venues, but I just asked the clerk where she thinks this would go. And 3.1 seems to be the goal that it could come under. We could flesh out some specific KPIs to get to that. But I think that that's a need for the council. As an example, this was something that Cody mentioned today. But, you know, we all know it's hard to recruit folks to fill all the positions. The interview process is somewhat cumbersome. We talked earlier tonight about, you know, are they doing really what the council wants them to do? Talk about goals and objectives and things like that. So, you know, I just questioned whether when you serve a year or two years in a board or commission, is that really getting it? We're the 21st century, or do we want to look at, you know, maybe having a collection of boards or commissions that focus on particular problems as identified by the council? The council wants a group to ding to from a citizenry perspective and discuss. Maybe there's a better way of thinking through this. And so to our theme of innovate and initiate, perhaps in this priority, it's taking a good hard look at our board and commission process and the boards and commissions that we do have and that the roles that they play, how they're staffed, et cetera, would be beneficial for the city as a whole and maybe give us a better work product from those boards and commissions. Because we can, we can get down to exactly what we're trying to get out of each of them. And some of them are obviously driven by statues and some of them by ordinance. But I think that might be something that we want to take a look at 2023 sooner rather than later. Because I know there was some frustration over the interview process this year. So just a thought.
Also, Namala.
I don't know if that's necessarily my first priority within the scope of all of what we still have on the list. But I appreciate that other people want to push forward that. Though, one thing that I'm having a slight problem with is just how we're tracking. So for 3.1, we are looking at 70% of, you know, our city events will prioritize neighborhood audience and are remotely focused. The second one is at least five community events will be culturally diverse. If we're really trying to, you know, particularly with the second one, attract a wide variety of residents and have cultural representation, how are we tracking that?
Can you speak to that one?
Come on up.
Are we tracking demographics?
We are not. We are tracking them by content. And we actually, council will be receiving, hopefully in this week's council notes, a full list of the events we have scheduled for 2023, and they're actually broken down into categories. I think the original intent of saying that they are either a neighborhood or culturally sensitive, it all grew out of an original direction to give large regional events. And we're just trying to find that right mix between smaller neighborhood and larger regional activations. But we're open certainly to tracking it differently. Yeah.
Are the demographics possible to track for these events? Because I know that can be hard.
In terms of who attends the events, it's somewhat challenging because you actually have to have staff to do the telling there. We have in the past used technology to give us counts by pinging cellphone signals, but we purposely did not make the decision to improve the robust demographics with that because at the time, a lot of people thought that was invasion of privacy and IT. So we purposely didn't do that, but we certainly could. I would use those, for instance, on the largest of activations. Because when you have an event like Fourth of July, when people are coming from multiple entrances, it's really hard. Some cities might look at parking and say, there's a car, there's 10,000 people. Or they might say, I'm at a hot dog bun, 6,000 people. But we tried to be very precise, and we would put devices at each entrance that would ping cellphone signals. So that's, we know attendance, but we've never drilled down to actual demographics. If that's something council wishes to see, we have the ability to do that. We would have that staff with iPads kind of doing surveys as people come in. It's voluntary. It's very tricky to do. It's hard to do. How ticketed events are different. We do know who's coming and from where. We don't ask rates or anything, let's just move on.
I'd ask the clarifying question because I, every community is struggling with that metric. And I haven't heard any great way of, of tracking the demographic at those types of events. So I, I just thought maybe you guys have other ideas about how to do that, but.
There is technology. If you're doing the cellphone signals, you can get a demographic package. Pay for that, and it's a little big brotherish, but hey, if you want it.
Oh, I'm just, you know, if that's, it is, as Michelle just said, it is really hard to track it. So I'm just, you know, if it's something for ticketed, or maybe it's just, maybe we focus more on that with, like you said, the, the actual tone of the event or purpose of the event. And geographically, if that could be something you add in to sort of help us understand where we are and what we're doing in those areas of the city. Because we do actually have demographics by geography that we can overlay. So that might be helpful.
Of course, with anything ticketed is going to have that. It's the events that are a little more.
Yeah, so maybe for where, where we can get it, when we can get it, that would be good. And then the only other question I had, I don't know, Rich, if this is yours or not, but the outreach to, just like, again, how are we tracking outreach to neighborhoods that don't have an HOA? Because we have it on here.
Oh, are you talking about 3.2A?
A1.
Two. Oh, two, I see.
I, I.
I, I.
And that might be a good answer for that.
Thank you.
Yes, great questions. So this objective, actually, I'll be completely honest, has been a bit of a moving target in terms of outreach to non-eachway neighborhoods. Because, as you pointed out, councillor, it's kind of like proving a negative. But I will say it's been extremely useful to us on one hand because I think it's helped staff mobilize and really focus on some areas of the city that maybe we haven't focused on previously. So obviously historic Westminster, TOD, also, I think downtown to some extent. And what, how it's been evolving, and that's why actually in the description, you know, we just listed some of the events that we've had rather than actually getting into the actual metrics. We started to look at not just the big neighborhoods that have HOAs, but also some distinct entities within those neighborhoods that may be deserving some attention from the city. Everyone deserves attention, of course, but, but there's some neighborhoods that have had specific issues that, that, you know, just need some, some attention. And so Knox Court, for example, is, is one of those entities that we've put on our list where we've had sustained engagement with them. There are others, there are other ways to break it down, but that's an example. So I have a list of 18 from Edneys. And if it's helpful, we can add that to the description here so it's clear how we're actually evaluating our outreach to those groups.
It's, so I'm just going to ask the question, is that a right metric now that you have experience with this, right? Because this is a relatively new metric. And is it possible that there's, that that's not a good measure or not a good target? Or are you not prepared to say that yet?
Yeah, I would just say my opinion is maybe changing the wording from neighborhoods to different community groups or something that's a little broader. I think personally, just my personal opinion, I think it's a very useful objective. Because it does help us focus on different parts of the city that may be getting as much attention. But I think we could probably, much as personally, we could probably change the wording a bit so that could be a little broader and more useful.
Councillor Baker, and then.
I like, I like what the city manager's idea about looking at reforming the boards and really commissions to make them more task oriented, and that would give them like really direction, too, I think. And we're doing all this page, right? All three. I think judging outreach by content is the way to go. I don't know the demographics of it. And then, you don't understand, 3.3A1 and 3.3A2. People are going to rate you what they rate you. How can you set a goal for what a community survey turns back?
Which one was that, Councillor Baker? Were you speaking?
Of the last one, 3.3A1 and 3.3B1.
Who's got the expertise on that? Any staff want to comment on, or provide more insight into Councillor Baker's comment?
Public Works Community Development have leave on I and II as cultural affairs.
First one's ADA.
Yeah, ADA transition plans. The question is, this is the one that goes to community development, public works and utilities. It's a KPI that says the average rating of 75 or above for question 17.1 in the National Community Survey for 2024. The focused objective was dealing with the ADA transition plan. So that would be to a code kind of world with ADA compliance, correct? I could, I could ask Mr. Where this came from.
Mr. Lindsay, can you, from the community survey, do you know what, maybe we could follow up with what Q17.1 is on the community survey? If we might have.
Know specifically what that question is about. Yeah, because I think, unless we can get that, I don't think we can fully answer Councillor Baker's question. And then the other one, the second one you asked was for the one right below that. And then the other one, the second one you asked was for the one right below that. Same thing. It's, yeah, they're both coming from that National Community Survey.
And I don't see how we can hold the staff to what the citizens of, okay, the community answer. They're going to answer whatever they think, and probably most of them know about the ADA plan anyway, so.
What I can tell you from my knowledge about that survey is that, once again, this is a survey where the, the different questions and categories are benchmarked against the national average. And so you can say, and, and then the survey, the, the topics are trended over time. So it tells you whether you're improving or not improving, and it tells you where you stand against a national benchmark. So I, I believe the staff have set that based upon, probably to be at least even with or higher than the national benchmark, is what I'm guessing. But we can come back and answer that with more detail when we bring the plan back.
And if I recall, the average ratings were what they are.
Trying to make it better.
Really, why would we hold the staff to that?
Well, staff are suggesting they hold themselves to it, I think is what that KPI is.
Don't, don't we need a transition plan and we get to?
If I, John, if I could speak to the ADA transition plan, we do have an ADA transition plan. It is posted on our website. And in fact, currently, we're undergoing both internal and external surveys to do gap analysis on that transition plan. So that is in place. I'm not quite sure what those two things have to do with each other, though, is my, what, what the 3.3A and then 3.3A I. I really am, yeah.
There's, there's two different things. One is the ADA and one has to do with community diversity. So in carrying out and preparing for programs, so there are two different measures. And I think one of the things that staff was encouraged to do when we helped them develop these KPIs is to come up with ways in which they could be held accountable and ways they believed they could increase the, their effectiveness or their performance based on some type of a benchmark, right? Where there's data available and the National Community Survey has been in place for a really long time. And it's kind of considered to be the gold standard across the nation for how communities get the measurement from the public's perception of how you're doing. So we can definitely bring back what those particular questions are about, but that's the genesis of that. I think the thinking behind this one, Councillor Baker. Yes. Yeah, and I can, yeah. All right.
Here.
Yes, there. And I think the Mayor Portem did too. Oh, okay. Right, Mayor, you start.
With the reaching out to non-HOAs. What we used in the past are local schools. However, two of your biggest neighborhoods are losing their local schools next fall. So it's easy in Historic Westminster, all of the elementaries, if you tell them the date, the time, PTA will get noticed. If you have the paperwork that they can put in their Friday folders, they'll even pan them out for you. So it's easy to get to community folks that way that have at least kids in the district and ask them to tell their neighbors and, and all of that. For the ones that are now even losing their home schools, then that becomes more of a problem. And like for Sheridan Green, we don't even have an informal group. But yet, when we had community engagement where councillors and the city staff came and sat down, we had a roomful of people, probably at least 40 people out of the neighborhood that came to hear what was going on and whatnot. So I believe it is important to hit neighborhoods. And on the next one, the outreach to 25% of HOAs and apartments, I would hope we're balancing that so we have a mixture there, not just HOAs. But we get to the apartments and sit down with folks and have conversation.
Thank you. Mayor Portem and then Councillor Nimala.
I have a similar point as the mayor. I think we just need to really think how we hit those non-HOA. I mean, it would be interesting to kind of see a map of what's covered by HOA and what's not. And I actually never thought about it before, but apartments is, that's probably a really big area where we have, we lack a lot of communication into those communities.
I know that from dog walking.
Yeah. The, so however we could rethink how we're doing that, I'd be open to it. I wanted to also just quickly put support behind what the city manager said about looking at the boards and commissions. I mean, that's kind of along the same thing that I've said, a different way though, really is, you know, how are we given the purpose if we're going to task them? So looking at what they're tasked with and, and the different groups, I think makes sense. And it's even actually probably a step forward, I even said to, you know, really look at those. I would say, any city manager pointed out, the ones that are, you know, quasi judicial that we have to have, I would be hesitant to have too short of a term on some of those because I think that the institutional, like I served on special permits and licensing before I was on council, and having some folks there that really understood how we make decisions and if I made decisions was helpful to new people as they came on. But I'm definitely in favor of what you're saying.
So Nimala.
We're all piggybacking on each other. I had written on here mapping, so it would be, I'm thinking for those first four, 3.1A, 3.1B, 3.2A, 3.2A2. Like a lot of that could, it would be really just helpful to have a map of where are we seeing the events so that we can know what they are, know where they are, and that could also go towards the neighborhoods. Where have we been? And we can show people, yeah, we've been all over this place.
Do we have mapping? I thought we had mapping because we talked about the short-term rentals. Wasn't there mapping in that?
I'm talking about like where we've had events.
Right.
So we can show, hey, we've done just as many events, you know, here versus there, that we're having good coverage by event. Like where have we been? Like where's Waldo? Where's kid?
Why does that relate to HOA?
Because we would be able to say, we've been in this, we've talked to this HOA, we've talked to this neighborhood, we've talked to, or we've had events.
That's what I was thinking, because if you're having an event in the middle of where there's no HOA, as long as you're also reaching out to the HOA, so we knew, we reached out to all 20 of these HOAs. And councillor Numala lives in the middle of no HOA land and, you know, there's been no event there. So you could kind of figure it out year into year. So then when they go to plan next year's events, they could see. Because I will tell you, like in Countryside before, well, we did just have an informal group, it kind of disbanded. But I do think that the community thrives on those events. If you look at like Countryside turnout, when you do a movie in the park, or when we did the town hall. I mean, people show up, I, you know, they, they do get word from the city things. So they want to participate in the things the city does, but you have to make sure that they're being put in those places. So it's kind of my thought process.
What would be your radius? Because.
It's why it'd be useful to see a map. I knew where, like the HOA, okay, the HOA borders this neighborhood. And we didn't, you know, we do an event in the middle of all the HOAs. Because I mean, again, using Countryside as the example, there are pockets of the neighborhood that are newer that have HOAs. And there's the biggest portion that doesn't in the middle of it, so.
Staff has some, they'd like to contribute to this session.
Hopefully, hopefully I can contribute to this.
Sam, make any work.
We, we're piloting a small program and admittedly, it's had its sort of its own starts. Every time we rip up a road, especially in non-HOA communities, we look up, we have access to GIS data that Community Development volunteers and staff of the Health Communications out with. We use it to map where we've been and where we've gone. And then we look at census data to look at language access to see, is this a high level, you know, community and will produce materials and publish in Spanish? Admittedly, we focused on roadway improvements because that's where, I don't mean this to be a pun, but where the rubber hits the road. And we would love to do more GIS level data if that is something that we want to resource and provide. We can do that.
That's very powerful data that's available.
Yeah.
Councillor Zadi.
So yes, so what everyone has said, and I think we, they've covered the targeting, right? As to who gets the outreach. And equally as concerned, the number of the, the variety of like how we're doing outreach. I, I think a few weeks, a couple of weeks ago, staff asked for our suggestions on how to improve the communications. One idea that I think I spoke about in that session was, and we start doing what schools do, where they do a once a week, like a Sunday, I get a phone call from my school, my daughter's schools, and it tells, the principal tells us everything happening that week in like 60 seconds. And I think I suggested the city manager report that level of detail. If we have something like that blasted out to people's phones, because, you know, most of our population, they actually prefer phone because of the age range and all sorts of reasons. But we could do the email thing and the social media, but I think the phone is a gap that we have. And if we start communicating at scale, so we have, and often, as I assume, right, of people who have opted in, we just start sending a message once a week that can get to a lot of people who don't look at email, who don't go on social media and who just want to know what's happened.
All right, staff, I'll just go back to you and say, was that enough input from the council members to kind of craft some refinements to this section?
Absolutely.
Wanting to clarity? Okay, perfect.
I get that same phone call.
All right. We're going to look to quality of life. Again, there's four strategic objectives there, so take a glance at those and looking for any gaps or adjustments that you feel might be easier. Also, Nimala.
Still have a beef with this KPI, 4.1B versus all residents to live within half a mile of a park, open space or trail access point. I mentioned this even when we were establishing this one, that they're so not equal. And so I, a trail, an open space or a park are just very different animals. And I'd prefer us to have, you know, if half a mile isn't realistic or what is realistic? You know, what is apples to apples to our community? And if there's parks or open space or some level, but like, I don't know, a trail, which is usually an open space, but I'm, I'm just not convinced it's something that's offering an equal experience for everybody. And if that's not possible, at least let's just talk about what is possible or what is lacking.
So you're looking for a possible refinement to that metric? And then Mayor Portem and then maybe staff want to comment on that?
I think it's another area where you might be able to rethink that. Because I, I don't disagree, and I think the challenge is, say Historic Westminster, you know, there's areas that are a little bit built out than other areas and we're just naturally a little more dense the way that it's built out. But that being said, if you're within a half mile of the trails, say, maybe if it's an area that's all they have, that maybe we enhance what they have versus an area where they have five different amenities. Like, and, you know, in the west, northwest corner, we have something different. Every direction I go, I could go to a different trail. And they all have different, you know, variety of things. So maybe it's more about enhancing the areas where they have less so that it's more equitable.
You're already here.
So a couple of things about this that, in San Diego, they just finished their park master plan and they looked at the half-mile walking, 10-minute walk. But then they also looked at, mapped the 20-minute bike ride to a park as well as that 30-minute ride on public transit to get to a park. So one of the data points that we really need is the walkability study, which I understand will be done this quarter. And so once we have that data, I think it'll be a lot easier for us to come back to with a better way of kind of measuring how we're doing against that. The other thing is that if, once we get that data, the goal of all residents living within a half a mile by December of '24 may or may not be feasible. I just don't know until we have that data. So when I saw that deadline, it made me very sweet. That was my deadline, so I apologize for that.
I guess that kind of gets at the point, though. I mean, the whole reason to have this as a, as a measurement or an objective is because it's about quality of life. So I think it's more about, instead of saying this outdoor experience, saying that we're going to provide some sort of good outdoor experience, no matter what part of the city you're in.
I think we can notate that one, that there will more than likely be a change to that metric. But we, we can't change the metric yet because we still need some data. So that'll be one that might have to go past your adoption of this, knowing that the, the, when staff has that vote, they'll come back to you with a recommendation on that metric. Perfect. Anything else on quality of life? That you want to consider adjusting? Yes, Mayor Portem.
So on 44A, and it's into the Historic Arts District. So just, one of those things that, just an odd thing. I just think there's room for improvement, I guess is the nicest way to put it. But like, if you go down 73rd Avenue, it still says Arts District. So one time, somebody decided that was worth putting signs up. So what, what measurable objectives can we do to actually put, put something behind the signs that are down there? And I know, I know that, you know, there's a lot of talk around it, but I just haven't, like, and if we're going to have that, let's have a serious discussion and let's take the signs down.
Yeah, so that grew out of an initiative that creates a lot of us. But around 2013, I was able to really make that a viable or cultural district. And since that time, we've actually lost assets through no fault of anybody's, but radio market and of course the terminal stage and those sorts of things. So we have fewer things down there, of course, with the event covers on passing. So we recognize that we want to be supportive because the people that, the Pittsburgh Westminster Arts District, the district is its own entity and they're very passionate about that brand. Sure, bringing additional assets to that district, I'm really sure, hopefully, we can help reach that vision. But when you speak specifically about 4.4A and that increase, that was meant to just really draw attention to the fact that this is going to be sort of part of Westminster and what can we do to at least highlight that historic fact? And that's why it's so closely tied to history and our purpose with this for society. I don't know if that helps, but yeah, over time, the assets have decreased. And we talked about possibly doing the Black Box Theater and some other things to help bring some more density, but yeah.
Is there opportunity to tie the property on 73rd and, you know, the direction we've given with some sort of outdoor venue?
Okay, and we have other ideas, should we have a, to do a pop-up self-contained shipping container galleries, things like that. At one point, when we were talking about going into the Harris Park Office building, we thought about building something like that on all the corners. Of course, we have excellent new partners in the Vidausa Collective who are in the row to have that. Yeah, that was an easy answer. I'd love to see more.
Mayor Portem, are you wanting the staff to maybe bring back a couple of more specific tactical suggestions of what could be done? Or what, what are you hoping for?
I would say yes. I mean, I've, that area, you've mentioned some of the different reasons why they're taking some hits. Probably the biggest one being Bev.
and probably the biggest one being that. But I think that that's, I don't want it forgotten, what the work that's been done down there. And I don't want that work to go away, because that community's worked very hard to see some reinvigoration down there. And so however we can, I mean, I've even, you know, just as an idea, not saying this is what we should do, but the kind of thinking, you know, what are we going to do with the rodeo market? Is there an opportunity to have some sort of, I've heard ideas like having the schools run, like the, I don't remember what they call it, but they have like, where you have different kind of restaurants and stuff in there. And what, what can we do with what we own down there that we bought with taxpayer dollars to actually reinvigorate that area? And, you know, maintain the character of that historic main street, you know, that they, that the community wants, that it, you know, once was, that obviously we've had some different councils over time and put dollars behind that. So I'm not saying what it has to be, I'm just saying that I think that in my mind, we owe that community that we're going to continue that work in figuring, and some sort of commitment behind it that's actual measurable, tangible objectives on this.
Excellent.
Absolutely, I think that's excellent, thank you.
Hey. Can I jump a little bit, because part of this dovetails on the Historic Landmark Board. And they had their meeting last week that they looked at focusing on nailing down their goals for 2023, which kind of were driven from 2022 and just overlaid into 2023. And they have three, or excuse me, four goals for this year is to increase opportunities for presentation of historical assets to the Westminster community. And that includes the events and tours that took place last year. And then organize historical information to enhance utilization of historic assets. And then identify historical landmark opportunities, of which they have identified with the Colorado Den, which is formerly Union High School. And the last one is develop partnerships to protect and enhance historic landmarks. So there's some opportunities to definitely capitalize on that. And then also, in conversation, I thought, I don't know if this is still a path that we're looking at doing, but was there a thought on wrapping electrical boxes still? Is that still an option for us to pursue? Because I think that could be also another opportunistic and inexpensive.
We're actually working currently with Westminster High School, and there are programs, and we'll be rolling out our first box wraps in the summertime.
Okay.
We're actually working on giving the students templates, and they'll be designing those. And then we'll have a selection process, and a portion of them will be converted. We ought to the same offer out to a front range community college as well.
Perfect. Does that, so I love that we're commissioning this kind of art. We already have art in our purview and our assets. Do we need any kind of foresight? Because what happens is, we get it, but then we lose the foresight on maintaining it. So do we need any kind of blind item or objective to make sure that we don't lose sight on the curation of these assets?
Shortly before I arrived at Westminster, we actually commissioned a study on maintenance of the artwork in our collection, there are over 200 pieces. So we have all of those recommendations, and we do have a budget dedicated to them. It's just whether or not we might want to expand that budget, possible. But we do have a plan of sustained maintenance for these projects.
Thank you. Officer Seymour.
Thank you. And my colleagues see this in here too, because I brought this up, and this is a discussion many of you have had, is that the, on 4.4, as far as funding the archiving process. And, and while I think we've made some great steps, we've hired an archivist. My concern is that, and this has nothing to do with the person, but as far as the FTE allocation, as far as, you know, sometimes if you only allocate, and we're asking that either that, that person do more in that time, or we don't, it's not a full commitment, really, it doesn't look like a full commitment. So that was my concern on the email that I sent on that. And I appreciate staff's update on that and the CIP funding that's coming this year. But my concern comes back to is, do we have enough FTE allocated to that in order to really commit to the program?
So there's a complete commitment to the program, but then the resources that were available at the time. More resources would be really welcome. Okay? Really, I mean, if we could convert that into a half part-time or benefit. Right now, it's a temporary position, they're using temporary salaries for two years. But I think my hope is certainly that we would finally be able to make that a more permanent position over time. We had 40 archivists supply for that position.
Forty?
Yeah. And many of them were, almost all of them had masters and some had PhDs. It's apparently quite a prized position.
So we'll have a discussion with our budget master.
Yes, yeah, if it's important, then council gets to decide if they're going to fund it.
Thank you.
Counselor Emmons.
So thanks, Rich, for bringing that up, because actually, in our board meeting last week, I had asked staff to better, I want to better understand how that board and that archivist work together. Because while the archivist is on a part-time salary, I also don't want to, I think there could be a lot of cohesion in the board and the staff members. So I would like a better, more comprehensive look as far as what they're working on and how they can help our community and that board.
Sorry, which board was that?
The Historical Landmark Board.
Oh, great, yeah, I think that's a conversation that hasn't been had, and would be really welcome.
Great. And then along with the Historical Society as well, so I heard that Kathy Asco met with.
They, Rich brought them to our strategic planning two weeks ago. And so they met, they, they know what we do. There was talk about where's that overlap? And they are doing city stuff, and we know some stuff has been thrown away because of stuff that we tried to get a hold of. So that's the reason it's critical that the cities, things that they are in charge of. And we've got 13,000 things in past perfect, we talked about that with them, and the process that we do. So she's, anyway, there's, there's been conversation.
I see them as highly complementary efforts. And what we're doing in Historical Society is very different in a lot of ways, but extremely complementary to each other. We'll make sure we have the archivists come to the next H O meeting.
Excellent. All right, Counselor Zadi.
So there's two things. One is from a quality of life standpoint, there are a few ideas that we've thrown around the last several months. I think it's under one new objective called something like explore innovative development opportunities. They're mainly around, so one is tiny homes. So I know that staff is looking into that. But tiny, so whether it's tiny homes, or whether it's missing metal, or something related to exploring our options there. That's, is one kind of sub-bullet of that new objective. The other is for very specific Knox Court. So now that the remediation is done, there is lots of talk on what was going to happen in that. What can we do with that? I think that should be explored kind of very specifically. There's school buildings closing, so what are we going to do with those buildings that are closed down? How can we influence what happens there? There's just sort of these very specific things that we do need to not forget, you know, to follow up on, that I think could fit under this explore innovative development opportunities, new objective.
Conversation, dialogue with the other council members based on that proposed new objective?
I think that's spot on, especially for Knox Court and the school buildings.
We're working on all of those things already, so adding up to the strategic plans, not creating new work by any means, so it's easy.
Does staff need any more direction in order to oppose some specific objectives around this?
Cody's already got, I'm sure.
Cody has it.
Mayor Potem, are you raising your hand?
I would, before I signed on, I would want to see that. I mean, in concept, I don't have a problem with it, but also in concept, it's, no offense, it's kind of fluffy. And I don't, we've, we've done a lot of work to stay away from fluffy, tangible, achievable, you know, strategic plan goals, so. But it sounds like we might be down that road, so I would want to see that, but I want to make sure that.
I mean, they're very specific. So under that, the objective is fluffy, the wording, but the actual things that they're doing are very specific.
Well, they are, but at the same time, we don't own school properties. So I mean, I want to, want to understand exactly what that means, because it's a, even though that's very specific, is it achievable in the confined, you can do?
One of the properties, Sherden Green, has a reverter clause, so it's going to, you know, if they don't use it as a school, it comes back to the city. So Deputy City Manager Andrews is working with the school district on what the timeline is for these schools as they come back. And one of them could return to our control, the other, you know, could, the school district can do as they wish. But we certainly want to be partners with them in thinking through, you know, these new assets coming online. So that one's working, tiny homes is, you know, part of what community development's working. And then Knox Court, we're coming back in what, within the next month, two months?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah, two weeks we'll be talking about. Yeah, Knox Court. Yep, so.
You also don't want to give them gibbines either, you already said, good job, guys.
So I think what sounds good is for.
We all need to look good, so.
You know, it's not necessarily a bad thing to have a few things in your strategic plan that you know you're already making progress on, you get to take credit for them, so.
And I would say to Kit, this is one of those with Sherden Green, however that goes, that community, I can't tell you how many phone calls I have fielded, some angry, some just wanting to know. So it's a perfect time to meet with Sherden.
So staff will, yes, go ahead.
I was just going to jump on that too, that, you know, it'd be great if, if in fact, that's something that comes back into city control. I mean, having some really strong outreach with the community on how the use of that building could.
And the second thing, sorry.
I had to stage a protest to get that school.
And I thank you for it.
The second thing was, so 4.2C says to allocate, says funding to maintain the utility bill assistance programs. I think, as we all know, the, our residents' utility bills are out of control for many reasons. But I think that would justify an increase, or to find ways to increase, not to maintain past levels of assistance, I think they could do with a lot more assistance.
I think that's a budget issue for June through October.
That's fair, but the inherent says to maintain, that's very specific.
Right now, it has to, because that's what's in the budget.
So going forward, we set that budget this year, we should think about.
So that can, that has been noted, and that could be part of your budget discussion related to that particular program. All right, are we ready to move to the final priority area, which is robust infrastructure? I know there's going to be some conversation here on Second Avenue. Yes, there was definitely some advanced thoughts on that. Take a look at the objectives there, and there's a couple of areas that are probably going to come up on this one. Who would like to go?
So this also is around the email that I sent, and I appreciate staff's answer on this too, as far as, this goes back to Counselor Baker's body, you know, a beautiful city is, is really uplifts and can uplift, beautiful streets, beautiful streetscaping can really uplift the neighborhood. And 72nd has been just a trouble spot for a long time. So I appreciate staff is doing, you know, as far as middle term, which is working with Excel and the undergrounding of the wires. And then concentrated effort by several public works, the development, development, walking about. And, you know, I even thought, you know, short-term fixes on that too, is that just the maintenance and upkeep, we hear about it all the time, the flower boxes that are there that have weeds in them most of the time and bad stuff. And even just bringing color to the street and uplifting it from that standpoint on a very short term. But I appreciate what staff is looking at that, the underground, rendering of the lines, and then the updating on, and now that the study's almost complete, is my understanding on 72nd. I appreciate that answer on that, that could make a big difference in the traffic flow there too, so.
Counselor Seymour, do you need any more input from staff on that one?
No, it was a very complete answer, so I appreciate that.
Anything else on the strategic priority? Yes, Counselor Baker?
This would be 5.4A.
Yes, continue to expand water conservation. What's your, what's your question? 5.4A, continue and expand water conservation programs and projects. Oh, I'm sorry, the KPI, I'm sorry, the 10 to 15% decrease.
Really 2,000 to 3,000 acre foot decrease in water usage. How is that possible?
Yeah, so 5.4A1, that's a 10 to 15% decrease, right? That's what you're asking about?
Your numbers is 2,000 to 3,000 acre feet of water, correct?
I don't know where that number comes from.
We have a minimum, if we have a minimum reliable water supply of 23,400 acre feet, 10% of that would be 2,340 acre feet.
So this is a 10 to 15% decrease based on the actual consumption we were seeing in 2020. And that 10 to 15% reduction comes from our conservation plan, which was adopted in 2019, I might have that here wrong. So that's, it's based on our actual consumption, not on our total water available, the 23,000.
What would the number of acre feet be?
The hard part in answering that question is that our water, the amount of water we use annually is different based on weather, among other things. And so there's not a specific value there that we can point to, but we look at it based on our line fit, I don't know how to talk about it any other way than mathematically. So we fit a line to the data and look at it in terms of reduction in water consumption based on essentially an average.
Well, according to the ACFIR, it goes year by year by year how much water is produced. I don't remember all the numbers off the top of my head, but in 2012, it was like 6.6 billion gallons.
Okay, I think of it in terms of acre feet, so we're at about 19,000 acre feet-ish. It's kind of generally where we're at.
Consumed?
It's consumed, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be close, 19,000 acre feet. Okay, so you're saving then anywhere between 1,900 acre feet to 2,750. And who's going to save that water, and how are they going to do it?
So we have been seeing that reduction in water use kind of naturally occurring over time. A good chunk of it is actually indoor water consumption that we've been seeing based on federal laws that prohibit high-use water fixtures, such as high-use washing machines and the like. That trend has been indoor, there's, it's a really kind of a more rough trend that we've seen outdoor consumption. So it's as people replace their toilets and washing machines and dishwashers, we're sort of seeing this natural decline in water consumption.
And that has a finite limit to it, correct?
Yes, however, we are, we believe we're far away from, from that bottom, based on research done across the industry.
So how much is going to come from indoor use now?
A good chunk of it will come from indoor over the next few years. This is the next 10 years, I would suspect would be indoor, with some level of that being outdoor as people switch, if they decide to, to zero landscaping and the like.
So you, so, so you intend to take water from outdoor use?
Primarily indoor water use is what we're seeing as the consumption.
Not going to take it from outdoor water?
When you say take it, what do you mean take?
Well, it's being used for outdoor water use now. And, okay, like an indoor water use, okay? Really, we've had high-efficiency toilets since, well, the mid-'90s. Because I built a house in the mid-'90s and it used 1.6 gallons per flush, and now the new standard is 1.28. Okay, now, if, if we go back to a 1960s toilet, it's probably 3.1 gallons of flush. But there's a finite limit to it that does that, and the same thing is true with really washing machines and dishwashers and other water-using appliances, okay? So really, what we do is if we add a 3.1 flush gallon toilet, we're actually saving or taking almost two gallons of water, right? Okay, so that's the same thing. How much are you going to save from outdoor usage of water? Do you envision saving from outdoor? See, because for me, this goes very thing about how do you have a beautiful city, okay? Trees take a phenomenal amount of water to grow. You know, grass takes a phenomenal amount of water to grow. Like the grass at City Park or in the ballfields takes an enormous, because those being sports fields take even more than like the CSU standard. So my concern here is, are we going to be taking outdoor water use from the city? Because for me, that is directly related to the trees and grass and the beauty of the city.
Right, so our, just to be clear, there's no requirement that we're changing anything to anything other than what our residents want? If that's what your question is.
If I could address that a little bit, I'd, I'd love to. You know, the Parks Recreation Lab raises the, one of the biggest uses of water in the city. And so we're looking at the landscapes that we're responsible for and trying to find those areas where we're growing turf that uses tons of water, where it doesn't make sense. And looking at landscapes, Colorado-friendly landscapes, like the one out here in the front plaza, which I, I consider one of the more attractive landscapes in the whole city. Looking for opportunities throughout the whole park system incrementally, throughout the whole park system, the 64, uh, parks and so on. I think we can find quite a few opportunities to reduce our consumption of water and enhance the visual character of these landscapes that we have. Make them more unique to here, to Westminster, to Colorado, while still preserving beautiful lawns and turf where they're appropriate. Absolutely more trees, that's the bottom line, more trees in our, in our city.
So is this outdoor savings going to be from our park departments and not from our neighborhoods?
Let me jump in, Dave Downing, Community Development Director. And actually, I was getting ready to answer what's probably going to be the next item on our list here, but now it might be a good time. Obviously, Councilor, we're hung up on your use of the word take, because it implies that it would be a city requirement that, that sod be banned or reduced or something like that. You're talking about providing options for people. We are working on updates to our landscape regulations. I would point out, for Council's information, the existing landscape regulations do allow native landscaping and zero escaping, zero escaping. That opportunity, that choice will be enhanced with our upgraded landscaping regulations. But we're, we're talking about giving people choices and options right now, not making requirements for really certainly of our residents.
But basically, regulation and requirement is only one method to take. Another method to take is through price. I mean, that's the whole point of an increasing block tier schedule. Is to permanently take water from, okay, the users. If you look at any of the research on increase, on increasing block tier rates, it's about permanently changing water use.
Now, Portem.
So the concept that I'm hearing you say though, is something that this council changed. And to me, that, that tier structure, and this is why when we had that discussion, I was not against, or I was against removing a third tier, because I do think at some level, you are responsible to say, want to make sure people don't misuse. So we purposely adjusted those tiers, and I'm open to whether or not we think that we missed the mark, which I haven't heard any data to say that. But, but to check Councilor Baker's point, when you talk about the outdoor savings and stuff, and we've talked about this a couple of different times, I know Councilor Seymour has pointed out examples where people are just changing the way the lawns are because they came from a different climate. They don't want to, I mean, it's a lot of work to, to do a lot. So are you seeing national trends that are showing those savings on their own? Because I think that's what I'm hearing you say, that's different than versus we're gonna, which I agree with you, I, I'm not in favor of us seeing people out of what yard they choose to have today or have had for the last two decades, but I don't think that's what you're saying, am I, am I wrong?
No, I, I think that's, that's accurate password. These trends were staying across the country, now not all parts of the country, you're out there. Irrigation, so really talking about the western half of the country, we talk about outdoor irrigation, but those indoor demands in particular, we're seeing those trends everywhere. Washington, we see, California, all across the board, yeah.
So to Councilor Baker's point then, would it be possible for us to actually see the tangible, what we think we're going to get? So when you're talking about 10 to 15%, do you think it's fair to say we think that, you know, just through people changing their lawns, we're going to get this, through the parks and rec, we think we're going to get X indoor, you know, Y? Because the other area where I think that there's big opportunity, where you actually hear people asking for, is in the HOAs. I mean, I do think that us figuring out how we make that easier, where people don't have to go through a big process of planning and stuff. If the HOA has voted and said, hey, we want to remove X amount of grass in the middle of our HOA because we don't want to pay for it, we have a different way, and they, you know, that's what they decide to do. I'm, I think that's something that we need to address anyway, but I also would like to see how that feeds into, into this. Because it makes sense, but it also makes sense to understand where we think that that water's actually coming, coming from.
Is that, that the staff can work up and provide us part of this metric?
Absolutely, we've probably already got a lot of it, and we can do some projections and make sure that's 15% clear of what's coming from indoor and what's coming from outdoor.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. We have to remember, some of these places use reclaimed water. So if they use less of that, then we have more to maybe give to another site.
All right, other, any other things you would like to explore or discuss under the priority area of robust infrastructure? Any gaps, any adjustments?
Dave's trying to make work for himself back there.
I wanted to comment this, but 5.4, the reason I was standing up originally, just wanted to bring attention to the development's proposal for the purpose, a senior planner position that will become available late this year. For is the specific purpose of, as we say, providing a landscape expert. The mayor sent a recent message, a new message, my idea is that old information from long ago, that we've heard about problems that HOAs have encountered. Not if allowance in our regulations, but perhaps some it's, it's amended official development plan, that costs money to do that. And of course, the actual, any kind of conversion with the HOAs could want to, that costs money also. But I think we're proposing the first step here is to have an expert position on city staff. Work with our friends in Parks and Rec, Public Works, to provide education, guidance, technical assistance to any group or individual in the city that would want to explore the possibility of converting existing sod to native species of landscaping. And so we would like to have Council's blessing on that, and we would propose that we create a new KPI just to make sure that we follow through with creating that staff position that can help people who are looking to convert.
My question on the stuff that we wrote in, are we going to go over that, or is, we were supposed to be putting in these?
So I think we have covered. That about is the, which one haven't we covered? What haven't we covered?
That is it. So the answer is one, Stanley Lake, we, we've been talking voting. But when that report came out, I don't know what was or wasn't in executive session, so I will first share that some of the information that was in there, I just, and I shared with city manager, I just think we need some more conversation around because we know the risks that boats have with the muscle, but we didn't discuss other pieces that we saw in that report. And to me, there's significant, there's significant questions, so.
Can anybody kind of identify which of the objectives that connects to?
I'll call out.
Preparedness.
So what, what would the objective be?
Find where that one was.
Okay, got it.
But I understand the favorite intent, right?
Got it, okay, that's what I was checking.
To explore and have a conversation about voting on Stanley.
Voting on Stanley, like, because the safety is. Now, Portem?
Well, and to me, this often gets turned into the voting conversation, but like what we heard from some of our partners were, you know, zero risk. There's risk in without, because I'm like the mayor, some, there's been so much conversation, I don't remember which meeting I heard what. And I have some things that I would like to address when appropriate, but I also don't want to divulge anything. But, but I do have some other bigger concerns and ways that I'd like to address proper staff about how we think about some of those other avenues, I guess, that's good.
Have, have we, so are we complete on our strategic objectives in terms of identifying the gaps and adjustments? And culture of this, if we're complete with those, would be to just really talk about the next steps? And Mark is here to, here, if you have any additional guidance, but Mark's also here to tell us how we move from here to bringing stuff back to you, and then bring you to adopt it.
So, you know, we certainly appreciate the council's time this evening, the discussion very thorough. I would expect no less important stuff. And the thought at this point is, is, you know, the staff needs to go back, review the comments, maybe wordsmith a little bit, find out, make sure that we have things in the right locations, and then bring that back to the council. And so, you know, if it's, if it's okay with the council, I would propose that no later than the end of first quarter, that's within 60 days, we bring back the strategic plan with the KPIs for your approval. If that's okay, so that would be kind of a plan, that acceptable?
Updated objectives on KPIs.
Yes.
Like, and I think, like, we normally let a red line version, but maybe a blue line version, right? Red line can kind of reads wrong, so blue line version, so they can tell where the changes are.
Mind, is that how long it took last time to come back to us?
You got to the strategic plan at the end of April, and it was early June when we came back with, with staff KPIs for all of these, so it's.
It's a faster timeline.
Okay, perfect. I would, I would assume that's faster since we have most of it here.
There's fewer of them, yeah.
We've got a couple of other.
Put in a council, an agenda item, like a month in advance.
Yeah, we can advance agenda items. I'm just, I'm saying it seems appropriate from where it was last time.
We have some big ticket items coming forward here in the next 60 days too, so I have to figure out in the right time to plug this one in. It's so that we don't double up unnecessarily. Then, yeah, by the end of first quarter, we can add that back.
And I think staff got the clarity they needed because we had them right here, so they could give you information and listen directly. I think that was really helpful, so there's not a lot of translation that has to happen, having the direct ability here tonight, so. Anything, anybody wants to contribute as a final thought?
Take trouble, so.
Thank you.
We don't know if it's snowing since, or what, so just be careful.
It is what it is, right? Good to see you all again.